We have a quorum.
All right, thank you all for attending. I apologize for not starting on time. Our study session ran a little bit long, and I always like to be able to take public comment when the public is obviously very concerned about these issues. So with that said, this is May 28, 2024. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Mayor Protem, do we have any announcements or introductions?
We sure do. And for everybody out there in the audience, I think you noticed a new face up here. There he is. I couldn't see him. I was hoping you were there. Anyway, please join me in welcoming our new city manager, Dallin Kimball. Dallin comes to Prescott with 14 years of public sector experience in Arizona, Virginia, and California, including eight years as county administrative officer in Mariposa County, California, the home of Yosemite National Park. He has been here just over a week, and I think, is this your third day or fourth day of actual meetings? Okay, very good. Welcome, Dallin. We appreciate you being here. Number two, we also, we have another new face out there, I believe, in the audience. Welcome our new airport director, Rick Kreider. Is Rick here? There you are. Rick is coming to Prescott from San Antonio, Texas, where he served as executive vice president for airport, rail port, and military relations at Port San Antonio. This is Rick's first day on the job. Thank you, Rick. Let's see. Number three, the City of Prescott Recreation Services Department will host a grand opening for the new basketball court on Saturday, June 1 at 11:00 a.m. The court is located at 3181 Willow Creek Road next to the dog park. This free event will feature exhibition basketball between the Prescott Police and the Fire Department, plus skills, skills tests, games, and giveaways for kids and families. Number four, reminder that the Prescott Library Marina Street parking lot is closed June 2024 to correct ADA deficiencies. External book drops will be available in the alley at the Goodwin Street entrance. Bulk donations will not be accepted during the lot closure, and all donations will need to be brought inside the library. The Lions Club paper recycling bin will be relocated to the south parking lot. Thank you for your patience as we work to make the library accessible for all. For online library services and more information, go to preskettlibrary.info. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and welcome, Rick. It's good to have you here. And obviously, our, our regional airport is going through a lot of regulatory challenges, and it's great to have someone here who's going to be guiding the ship instead of the airplane. That's okay. All right, we'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlbert of the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance from Councilman Gamboge.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we gather together today to do your work and your will for your city. We give you thanks for the weekend that has been, and especially for those who made the ultimate sacrifice in order that we might enjoy the freedoms we do in our country. Today, we thank you for the gift of water, which is at the same time abundant on earth and precious in our community. We thank you for our city, which has been home to Prescottonians for 160 years, and the Yavapai people for time immemorial. We thank you for all who love and serve our city, and especially those who will keep us safe through the summer tourist season. Bless the children of this community with a memorable and safe summertime in everyone's hometown. Bless us by your presence and guidance in this meeting, that all of which is decided today will be for your glory. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purity and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gamboge. We'll now have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gamboge.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. Now we'll move on to item six, presentations from Arizona Public Service Annual Fire Mitigation and Summer Readiness Presentation. Good to see you, Frank.
Good to see you. Honorable Mayor and Council, it's my extreme pleasure to come present to you today. Before I get started, though, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Frank Sanderson. I'm the Northern Division Director for Arizona Public Service. I wanted to thank this body and many that sit in the seats behind me for their leadership and support, especially around fire mitigation and the things we have to do to keep our communities safe. And as you know, May is the wildfire preparedness month. And so in talking about that, there's only one thing that is more important to Arizona Public Service than reliability, and that is safety. Even our promise is we do the right thing for the people and prosperity of Arizona. And just to give you a few stats, in 2023, and this is for the state of Arizona, there were 1,557 fires that burned over 204,000 acres. One in three of these fires started or burned near our infrastructure. And so knowing that, we, we have really, we continue to put a lot of investment, effort, and time into making sure that our communities and customers are safe. Along with that, summers are hot. The governor just recently released an extreme heat preparedness plan, and the Arizona Department of Health assigned their first heat officer. And so when you combine fire season with heat, it adds a little bit of a dichotomy, because if the power's out, it's hard to keep your house cool. And so both of those things are very important to us. As, as we look at our comprehensive fire mitigation plan, APS approaches it in three ways: how we prevent, how we mitigate, and how we respond. From a prevention standpoint, vegetation is a big deal. We spend all year long inspecting our lines, inspecting the ride of ways, making sure that the vegetation is in a state that we can try our best to ensure that that vegetation won't come in contact with our infrastructure. We've even built other relationships with entities such as the Forest Service to be, even be able to go outside of our rideaway and identify trees that, because of their size, and, you know, their health could come into our lines. And so with that partnership, we've been able to remove trees that are even outside of our easements. We do detailed patrols with drones, helicopters, side by sides, hiking. We've really employed a lot of different techniques to this to make sure that we know the state of our infrastructure. Just a few more stats for you. In our Northwest Division, which includes Yavapai County, we patrol over 1,900 overhead feeder miles. We inspect over 38,000 miles of power lines to clear overgrown vegetation, and that's including transmission lines and distribution lines. We have instigated new technologies, whether that's relaying or field devices that help us quickly and efficiently, you know, make repairs and get the lights back on if there is issue. The other thing we do is, is our DSAP program, our defensible space around poles. What this does is it allows us to really protect the areas around our infrastructure that have devices on them, such as transformers, switches, anything that can give off a spark. During the pipeline fire, we had a really good story of success where we practiced that defensible space around our substation, and as the fire burnt through, there was no damage to, you know, the infrastructure. So we were able to get the lights back on much quicker. We also support the Right Tree in the Right Place program, and that's something that's very important to us, to make sure that, you know, just, just like our infrastructure, that our customers are aware of where on their property, how close to their house, different things like that. From a mitigation perspective, we go through what we call preparedness levels, and we have meteorologists and a whole fire mitigation team that does a lot of analysis and tells us, you know, when it's time to up the awareness. We outfit our trucks differently. We respond differently. We have all the tools we need to go do the work without, you know, as much risk to causing a wildfire. The other thing that I'm sure is, is very important to the community because it affects them is we go into what's called a no-reclose strategy. Normally, when a line trips in non-fire season, we're able to re-energize fairly quickly. But it, once we get into a certain preparedness level, we do a full inspection of the line before we turn that back on, so to make sure that everything's good to go before we turn that back on. And that can definitely, you know, cause some anxiety, because we do not like our customers to be without power. But in those situations, they may experience longer outages because we are going out into the rough terrain, possibly at night, you know, doing those things, making sure that line's good to go before we turn it back on. You may have noticed around on our power lines, we've installed over 2,500 fault indicators. No, they're not Christmas lights. They're not cameras. What those do during an issue, if there's an issue on the line, our troublemen, rather than patrolling the whole line, it's almost like a breadcrumb trail that tells them where to go, so we can more efficiently identify the defect or the problem and get it fixed. We really encourage our customers and communities to report outages. We do have ways of, you know, seeing where the outages are. But if you're experiencing outage, please contact through, either through the app or, or through the phone. That helps us also narrow down more quickly. The last thing around mitigation is we definitely encourage our customers to have a ready kit, have plenty of water, batteries, food, so that in those situations where your power is out for a time that's above normal, that you're prepared, you're ready to go. From the response perspective, we have a full fire mitigation specialist team that respond to every single fire within our service territory. We have linemen and troublemen that work 24/7 to make sure that we can respond quickly and make the area safe and get the power back on as quickly as possible. We also want to remind our customers and the community, if you see a power line down, please, please, please stay away from it. Call in. We will get the experts there that can safely remove that hazard and get everything back to normal. This year, we do have a new, a new tool in our tool belt. We hope we never have to use it. It is called Public Safety Power Shut Off. And just a few things on that. It's much like a regular outage, but what we've done is, we've invested heavily in some technology that can predict from five to seven days out if we're going to have a very, very, very high fire risk day in certain pinpointed areas. And we've identified 13 areas throughout the state. One of those areas does fall into a little part of Prescott. It's off of our Delano 10 feeder, which is out towards Iron Springs Road heading out of town. And basically, what that would be is, at five to seven days out, if the decision was made to say, hey, we need to turn the power off during this wind event or this environmental event, we would, every day, be communicating with those customers that are affected by that. Those that are in those areas have already been contacted. We've worked with the county, all of the emergency services, you know, the employees from the City of Prescott have been fantastic. The county's been fantastic. But it is truly about the, the safety of our communities. And, you know, just from a communication standpoint, I want to make sure I'm clear. Those that will be affected will, in that time period, will be communicated with every day. Yes, it's still looking like it's going to go, looking like it's going to go. There will be times that it'll say, nope, the weather changed. We're not going to do it anymore. And there may be a time where we actually, you know, do that. Once that happens, we shut off the power for that wind event. We then have helicopters and drones and a ton of people that, as efficiently as possible, we're going to inspect that line before we turn it back on, and then we'll turn it back on. But the whole time, the communication will be happening, both, you know, for the ones that affect Prescott, we'll be communicating with you and the county, and each different municipality that's affected by those. Again, this is a tool in the toolbox. We did go back on some data that our system generated, and over the last five years, we would have had to do this five times. And that's not all on this location. We have, like I said, we have 13 locations, and the total customers for the state of Arizona that are impacted by this program is 13,000. And so we realize that that's very disruptive to those customers, and we want to do the best job we can to keep safety first and keep everybody in power. Again, the last thing I just want to plug, we do have a new outage map that's much more user-friendly. Encourage everybody to go look at that on APS.com. And with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Interested in this new program and your tool belt, how exactly will the public who's affected be communicated and know they're in the territory? And is it finite, or can it possibly expand?
So currently, it's finite. It's from one device to another. And so they've, they've, we've had a communication campaign going for a while now. We've, and then along with our partners at the county, the city, making sure that each of those customers know that they are within that area. So we're talking mailers, phone calls, that type of communication.
So I live off Iron Springs.
Okay.
I got a weird mailer buried down in about the seventh or eighth bullet point. It talked about a new tool that power off. So it never said you're affected. It was like the greater issue. So how will those people actually know?
So I'm glad you bring that up, because if, if we miss that, then that's something I can do something about.
I hope I live farther enough from Iron Springs that I'm not in your territory. But I just, I just want to make sure I understand for public's communication how they would have found out by now.
Absolutely. And as far as I understand, it was through either a call or they were sent a notification in the mail, and most likely an email if they're signed up for those emails. So when an actual event happens, they'll take that same list. We've got a list of all those customers, and they will be communicated with. It most likely will not be mail in that, in that case. It will be text and email. And it, it'll basically say, hey, we see an environmental event coming up in, on this date, and we will be in contact with you to, to say this will happen or this will not happen, every day. But I am interested, maybe I can get with you offline. I want to make sure I understand your experience and...
It didn't mean anything to me, so I tossed it in the trash can.
Okay.
So this is why it's like, you know, I think the communication needs to be very serious with those ex-thousands of Prescottonians or people in the county to say, you are in this territory. This is what it means. If you have any questions, call us. We'll call you in 10 days to check in, to see if you have any, you know, just to make sure that people are aware versus, I can't tell you how many people are not aware, and so you can't overcommunicate enough. And if there's people who have health issues in that region, that's what I'm most worried about, that their medical equipment won't work for them, that they really need to be planning ahead. And I have a spare bedroom. If I'm not involved, I'll help people. Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you for the insight. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, thank you. I would just like to point out that APS is a very important partner in making our community resilient and prepared for catastrophic, catastrophic events such as wildfires. Many of the lot, huge wildfires in California, for example, have been caused by high winds and trees falling on the power lines that were live. So if your power is shut off, it's for the safety of the community, and I think it's a small price of inconvenience to pay as opposed to having the town burned down. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the support.
Thank you, Frank. We appreciate your update, and this new information, I think, is important for the community to know about, and particularly to put APS.com on their quick list so they can follow any outages and things like that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
All right, we'll now go to proclamations. Prescott's 160th anniversary. I don't know if anybody's here to accept this proclamation. Who was here when we first established Prescott 160 years ago? But I can tell you, I'm going to need a new money clip, because this says 150, and I'm going to have to find a 160 somewhere. But with that said, I'll just read this proclamation, because it's obviously a substantial milestone in the history of our city. Proclamation, Prescott's 160th anniversary, May 30, 2024. Whereas the City of Prescott has a long and proud history dating back to the creation of Arizona Territory, and today we celebrate 160 years since Prescott's founding. And whereas in the midst of the Civil War in 1863, the U.S. Congress enacted legislation creating Arizona Territory, in part to take advantage of the prospect of mineral wealth, particularly gold, and in May 1863, an exploration party led by Captain Joseph R. Walker discovered gold in the Bradshaw Mountains and set in motion the chain of events leading to the establishment of Arizona Territory. And whereas in the town of Prescott, which was founded on May 30, 1864, and it was dedicated as the first capital of Arizona Territory and the seat of government for the newly created Yavapai County. And whereas Prescott served as the territorial capital from 1864 to 1867, and then again from 1877 to 1889, before the capital permanently moved to Phoenix, should have stayed here, I think. The territorial capital, known for mining and ranching, quickly becoming the financial center and the seat of government. And whereas Prescott was established on land that had been occupied and cared for by the Yavapai people, who are the ancestors of today's Yavapai Prescott Indian tribe. And whereas the rules of modern rodeo were established here in Prescott, with the first modern rodeo taking place in 1888, and our community will celebrate the 137th edition of the world's oldest rodeo later this year. And whereas the famous Whiskey Row saw a share of rowdism, crime, and the occasional gunfight, and even burned to the ground in 1900, only to rise again. And whereas Prescott City Charter was established in 1958, and currently is one of 19 chartered cities in the state of Arizona. And whereas today, Prescott remains an important government and financial center in the northern, central highlands of Arizona, inviting visitors and residents alike to enjoy its vast pine forests, stunning mountain ranges, and the iconic granite hills. Therefore, we celebrate the 160th anniversary of the founding of Prescott, Arizona, on May 30, 2024, and invite all citizens to join in honoring our proud Western heritage and history, and look forward in contributing to a very bright future. With that said, I've attached my name in my proclamation. Does anybody want to make any comments? Thank you very much. It's such a great historic town, and being able to maintain its history and recognize its contribution to our state, and quite frankly, to our country, something to be quite proud of. Thank you.
All right. As the mayor makes his way back up here, I'm going to review our open call to the public process, and then I'm also going to review our public comment decorum process. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and return it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing the council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on this topic, and topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I don't have any green comment cards. Is there anyone that wanted to address the council regarding something that is not included on today's posted agenda? No. Okay. Now on to public participation. City of Prescott invites participation in council and board commissioning committee meetings. In the spirit of objective analysis and civil debate, we will follow a processed format to accomplish sharing information in a productive and informative matter. Meetings and discussions will follow the following format for agenda items: staff report and presentation, council questions and discussion, applicant or outside organization presentation and discussion, any further council questions, public comment, and council votes where applicable. With decorum and respect in mind, city staff and council kindly request... With decorum and respect in mind, city staff and council kindly request that the public wait for their opportunity to speak until the public comment portion. We ask that you debate the proposal or the presented materials and not criticize staff, presenters, or outside agencies. Any public outbursts will hear the gavel from the mayor or board commission committee chair requesting decorum. If individuals continue to disrupt the meeting, they may be escorted out. Further, members of the public are expected to present new information and ideas when addressing the council, and if a speaker simply repeats previous comments, the mayor or chair may limit their comment time. If a speaker displays hostility toward any of the presenters or staff, they will be gavelled and admonished, and if they continue, the mayor or chair may request that they be escorted from chambers. Finally, we request that applause be limited to recognition during the presentation and proclamation portions of the meeting. Thank you.
Well, with that said, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on council want to pull anything off of the consent agenda list?
I do, Mayor. I'd like to pull off item H.
Item H? Any other items?
Yes, Mayor, I wanted to pull item C.
Item C. Okay, other than item C and H, I'll entertain a motion for the remaining consent agenda items.
Mayor, I move, we approve consent agenda items A, B, D, E, F, and G.
And I.
What about I?
Oh, and I. I didn't see that down there. Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay.
Passes 7-0.
Since C comes before H. Councilwoman Foworth?
Yes, Mayor. I had a couple of questions about this very important item for our long-term strategic plan and wanted, I sent the questions ahead of time to Mr. Heiney, so he was prepared to review those. Thank you.
Sure. So would you like me to review the questions that you had written down and provide the answers?
And, or anything else you're prepared to present, but yes, I would like the questions answered.
Well, yeah, I presented this item at the last meeting, so we had placed it on consent. Happy to answer some of the questions that Councilmember Foworth put forward. You did have a chance to review the contract and the response to the RSOQ, the qualifications request. And one comment that came, or question that came from Councilmember Foworth was related to, there was a mention of industry clusters. And that's usually when you're looking at it from the Economic Development Administration for the United States looks at clusters or areas that have multiple type of factors that can create it, make it a cluster. You were surprised that you did not see an aviation cluster in Prescott, and you're correct. We do have a very strong educational component with Embry-Riddle. We have a great airport, but we don't have all the ingredients that technically qualify it as a cluster. However, with the strategic plan, that's something we can strive for. It's something we can build towards. So that's noted. You had another question regarding Prescott pure counties. There was a typo in the response. What we want to do when we do a strategic plan is look at peers. We want to benchmark against cities and towns that are similar to ours. And there was a typo, they responded with county, but indeed, we've already been in contact with them. They did change that, and we would be looking at peer cities for benchmarking, cities and towns, mostly in the Southwest. But that's something we'll work with them on. You mentioned that the city council, you asked about city council getting to review the chamber's full regional economic development plan. So for those that were not at the meeting, I think we had an empty room last time, so most of you were not at the meeting. There is, part of the reason why we selected this group to do the strategic plan is because they've already had boots on the ground in Prescott. They have worked with the Prescott Chamber Foundation, a private organization using private dollars to do a region-wide economic development plan. We thought there could be some synergy between Prescott's plan and the greater plan. So that plan is still, my understanding is that they're, they have not rolled that out to the public yet. They have a steering committee and they will work on their public dissemination, but we don't know what the timeline or how that's going to work. So, but we definitely would have that conversation as we go into our strategic planning. How do we work together on the regional basis? So that's what we're looking for there. There was another question about council involvement in this. So this is strategic planning, if you're familiar with what we did at the city level earlier this year, there was extensive council involvement. For this plan, there will also be a great deal of council involvement. It will be partly staff-driven, but it will also be council inclusion. One of the things, similar to what they did with the regional plan, there will be a steering committee, and they do propose that one to two council members beyond that steering committee. So that'll be up to council to appoint those, but, so we would have council involvement from the start. And then once they, we start the steering committee, they're going to come here and do a lot of public engagement. They plan to have roundtable meetings with citizens and business owners to start to get an idea of what people are wanting and what Prescott needs. Council members will be part of that engagement as well. They're looking at doing one-on-one meetings with council members as part of their public, their engagement with you. So they'll hear from each of you individually. Then, once they get the plan done, they'll report back, and it'll be a study session, hopefully something like this, or a study session like we had earlier, where they will present the plan and get your comments and feedback. So there'll be a great deal of council involvement in that plan. And I think that answered all the questions. Were there any more?
Nope, that was it. I didn't realize that city leadership was synonymous with city council.
Yeah, he said he used it interchangeably.
Very good. So that's good to see.
Yes.
And I'm sure we can discuss which members of council would be interested in participating in this and providing city leadership's input. Now, I noticed going through the references here that, you know, there was a first-ever Quad Cities Regional Economic Development Strategy and Action Plan. So tell me how that contrasts with what has already been done and what would be done in this plan?
Well, that's a good question. So the strategic plan for the countywide, it did involve, it did involve staff officials, city managers, the county administrator was part of that. So it did involve municipal involvement, but it's looking at the whole region. It's looking at how do we work together as a region to attract economic development? You in Prescott, as the council, you want to have a strategic plan specifically for our city. We have certain assets that we're well aware of, that we want to promote, our airport, the air park around the airport. So this will be much more specific to Prescott, but there is opportunity to say, well, we have Prescott's, we have our plan with Prescott, how does that interact with other plans that are going on regionally? But this is going to be your plan. This is going to be the city's plan for strategic planning.
But I would expect that we would be putting together a local plan that would then integrate with the regional plan to make sure that we're not working against steps-
Absolutely.
-that may be more broadly supported outside of the city of Prescott and that we don't conflict with that.
Absolutely.
So Tyler, I think you were involved in this, weren't you?
He's not, he's not. Tyler doesn't get to sit with you anymore.
Habits are hard to break, I know. I, I was to a small extent, so that most of the planning process of the county's plan led by the chamber occurred with our previous city manager, and as they were wrapping that up is when I became interim. So I actually just had my first meeting with them last week, I think it was, which was kind of a wrap-up and discussion on next steps. So as far as the development, I wasn't super involved except recently, but, but I agree with John that you do want to hone in more and more fine-tune a plan, which is what the goal for this is, to look at Prescott specifically, but it will also, it'll mesh well with the region and it'll, it'll really cater to each other.
Well, I think that probably makes our agreement to engage with this local plan so that we can coordinate with the regional plan now that the primary representative for the city is no longer here. Right? Okay, any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda item C.
Second.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Protan can tell me.
Yes, I wanted to pull this item off of the consent agenda. Kaylee, thank you for coming up. You know, I wanted to do this just because I wanted to recognize what's happened here in Prescott. And in the spirit of just having 160, or proclamation to our 160th year in Prescott, one of my very favorite things is our history here. And we have been lucky enough as a community, through Kaylee's efforts and others, to attract the 2024 Preserve Arizona Conference here to Prescott, Arizona. So I'm very proud of that, and Kaylee, I'm happy with your work. That's going to be held June 25th to June 28th with a very robust schedule. So if you have a historic home or a historic business, expect all these wonderful historians that will love everything you've done, coming by and inspecting and oohing and aahing. Kaylee, do you want to speak a little bit to the conference? You've done such a great job. I mean, there's at least 25 different activities or more on this list.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember can tell me. Kaylee Nunez, I am the preservation specialist for the city. So yes, last fall, SHPO, which is a state preservation office, approached me about the possibility of having the conference here. And of course, I jumped at that. We had less than a year to plan it, so it's, it's been a lot of effort, but it will span three days. There will be approximately 300 participants coming from all realms of preservation. So we have, you know, we not only have the architectural historians, there are going to be archaeologists, anthropologists, people from the nonprofit sector. So there will be about, yeah, 25 sessions with various topics along with workshops and tours. So it will be a jam-packed three days. You do not have to be a professional to register for the conference. You can go search it. I forget the exact web address of the preservation conference website, but if you just search 2024 AZ Preservation, it'll bring it right up with all the details. So looking forward to it, and thank you.
This is a very exciting time for Prescott to really shine. I know in years past, if you've all been here for a long period of time, you can, along with myself, remember when a lot of the businesses in our historic buildings were actually boarded up. There was a lot of blight and decay. And I look at where we've come in just a few short years here to 2024, and I'm always amazed. I live downtown, I walk my dogs almost daily, and it never fails, one home after another has been restored, and they're beautiful. Now, if you decide to attend, anybody, make sure you attend for the pub crawl at, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock-
I forgot to mention that one.
On Thursday, June 27th.
So they're going to have really old alcoholic beverages there or something?
I wish I could say we discovered a case of wine underneath Matt's, but no, we have not done that. Thank you, Kaylee.
And this grant will not cost the city any money. It will be fully reimbursed. So that's great.
See, now that's my kind of expenditure.
That's right, yeah.
Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. This is a wonderful opportunity to showcase our beautiful town, but also, isn't it going to be held at the, our historic Elks Theater?
Some of the sessions will, but the hosting hotel is the Haciampa.
Oh, the Haciampa, even more historic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kaylee. So with that, I move to approve consent agenda item H. Second.
A motion is second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll now have the consent ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Adoption of ordinance number 2024-1859 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona. Amending Prescott City Code Title IX, Chapter 9-1, Section 7, Subsection A, 9-1-7A, Methods of Parking. And Mayor, you do have a couple of public comments on this item while it's consent. You could take them if you'd like.
Sure, I'll be happy to take those comments. Are we going to have any discussion or presentation on this at all?
There's no presentation from staff because it's a consent ordinance, but if council has any questions, I'm sure staff would be available to address those.
Well, maybe we'll get some concerns after the public comments are presented.
Okay. Jeffrey Herbert?
Good afternoon. It's an honor to speak with all of you today. Thank you for, for hearing my, oh, sorry.
Yeah. Is that better?
All right. It's an honor to speak with you all today. Thank you for giving me a moment of your time. I own a small business in town, and the parking lot behind the Burmeister Building, behind my business, is the subject of changing the, the parking ordinance today. So last year, the city of Prescott parking enforcement staff created a scheme which, according to police records, create, collected thousands of dollars in fines from the people of Prescott. And when I received a ticket last August for backing into the city lot behind the Burmeister Building, I decided to challenge the citation because being mandated to back it, to not back in, right, to have to pull in straight and back out into oncoming traffic where people are walking, just seemed to contradict two decades of public safety training. And if you guys wonder about that, you can look at all the, the fire and PD vehicles parked in the city lot right here. That's what we're trained to do, so it's safe when you pull out. When I challenged that ticket in court, Judge Padilla initially found me guilty. A few days later, Deputy Chief Brambilla called me personally to let me know the ticket would be dismissed and never should have been written in the first place. A few days after that, Judge Padilla sent me a letter saying the citation was dismissed, quote, "in the interest of justice." In the following weeks, we got to meet with some of you on the council. We got to meet with Councilman Montoya, and we got to meet with city attorney, Mr. Young, and we discussed, you know, what we had encountered and what we learned. And the city attorney said that he directed the parking enforcement to stop writing these citations. So at the time, I asked, well, are you going to give the money back to everyone that was given these wrong citations? And he said, no. So that doesn't seem, seem like the right choice to me. And what we learned was the, a couple of folks that worked in parking enforcement commissioned metal signs that were printed and installed in a single city parking lot behind the Burmeister Building. And they decided to issue citations to cite an unrelated ordinance, 9-1-12A, which says you must obey city signs, but there was never any language written up until this point that supported that from, from being the case. So we later learned that new language was going to be written, and that's, that's what the vote is today. So perhaps instead of voting to make the jobs easier for a couple of parking staff that if, if you don't believe me, please ask some of the folks we've talked to and look into this. I mean, that, that's kind of the point of this. Perhaps we should look into what really happened and was this money taken inappropriately from the people of Prescott? And, and should it be returned before we vote on changing the laws of parking? So anyways, that's all I've got to say. I just wanted you guys to know a little bit about what we learned occurred last year, and I would ask you to, to not vote on this, to, to force people to operate their vehicles unsafely and to maybe look into what happened.
Lawrence Carell?
Good morning. Larry Carell. I'm also a multiple business owner here in Prescott, several businesses up at the airport area and hands and a few others in the area. So in addition to what Mr. Herbert said, we did meet with several council members. Mr. Herbert and I worked on this together as I received a citation the same day. Found it odd, picked up a to-go order at the Eurasia Restaurant, walked back through the, the alleyway there behind the Burmeister, Burmeister Building on Gurley, and found that the civilian parking enforcement officer was parked under the sign that said, "No Parking Fire Zone," coming out of, coming out of frozen fannies with an ice cream. And I go over to my car and I have a citation for backing in. So it's not the point of the $93, I don't care about $93 bucks. But when we started doing the research on it, pulled the public records from police department, met with the city attorney, met with some of the council members, what we looked at was about $31,000 in citations given incorrectly. What we also found is that over 18 months, nobody on the police force, from the chief down, in- down, including the two civilian parking enforcement officers, nobody knew that the tablets that they used to write the citations were programmed incorrectly by DPS. So when we brought this to the attention of the Assistant Chief, they went to the city attorney. The city attorney said, hey, you really shouldn't be enforcing this. They stopped enforcing it, kind of, because my daughter also got a ticket for doing the same thing. And that kind of set me off. I said, you know, that's, they're wrong, and stand up for your rights. So that's why we're here today is if you look at 917A, it's pretty clear language currently, standing or parking close to curb, parking block, or parking stall line, except as otherwise provided in this chapter, every vehicle stopped or parked upon a roadway, city parking lot, or other city-owned leased or leased property where there are adjacent curbs, parking blocks, and the word "or" not "and", parking stall line shall be so stopped or parked with the right-hand wheels of such vehicle parallel to and within 18 inches of the right-hand curb, parking block, or the parking stall line. And then it goes into angled parking, which isn't pertinent to the parking lots. So if we look at how this is currently applied, that would say any city-owned parking lot, including this one here. So when we met with Councilman Montoya, I kind of cracked a joke and said, let's stand up and look out the window. And at the time, there were 13 city vehicles backed in. And I said, well, they should all call the Police Department and have citations today. So, and on the way in here, I counted 19 city vehicles backed into parking spots, not including others. So talking to AAA, talking to the Smith System folks, and 22-plus years in the military, and also, yeah, having public law enforcement experience, we were always trained to back in. You always back in, you pull out. So the fear is that, are we opening the city to liability by saying to make two individuals' jobs easier by not having to get out of their cart to read the license plate, or because the plate readers that are mounted to the vehicles can't read the plates? Is it worth $93, of which the city gets about $19 after the county court fees? Is it worth $19 to open the city to potential liability of backing over somebody who's inebriated, somebody on a bicycle, a small kid, because the lighting in that parking lot is not very good at night? So when we look at it, are we, as citizens and as taxpayers in the city, are we willing to take on that risk for the benefit of two people who write citations? And by the way, when the totals were just under 500 citations for the year, with one of them writing 30, and one of them writing 119 for one code, and then the other one writing 108, and Mr. Owens wrote 495. So we have one person writing a lot of citations, we have the other one giving out warnings. So there's no consistency, but what we need to look at is the potential liability of, if I have a three-year-old kid or my seven-year-old granddaughter, we're walking out of Bashford Court, it's nighttime, somebody backs over my granddaughter because they can't see, poor lighting. Is it smart to vote this in? Or should we look at tabling this, doing a little more study on it? Or should we just go ahead and pull the trigger today and say, let's write this into 917A? I personally don't think it's a benefit to anybody who visits the city. It's a benefit to two people who write the citations. But I think we're opening the city to a lot of liability and a lot of other problems going forward because I back in, and I'll pay the $93 ticket to back in because it's safer to pull out. Not only that, but looking today, AAA conducted a study, and 60% of the time, backup technology failed. So backup camera systems and sensors failed. So how are we going to see a kid? I was a VP of Operations at the telephone company for years, and in my 14 Western states that I ran, we required our employees to back in, and I'm sure that the APS folks do, water, et cetera, for safety reasons. That was because one of my employees backed his truck up out of somebody's driveway and ran a kid over and almost killed him. So for me, it's personal, but it's, more than that, it's opening the city to liability. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
That's all, Mayor.
Thanks. Have a great day.
City Attorney, do you want to maybe address a couple of his concerns?
Yeah, I think that the background-
I think the first one is to be referencing the Supreme Court's issue on no longer being able to mark tires with a chalk line.
Yeah, I'll address that as well. And PD presented this in the study session. Essentially, these are changes that were requested by PD, didn't come directly from my office. But the background is laid out, I think is pretty accurate, at least in my experience as well. We were enforcing a no-back-in rule because of the signs that were established in certain places, namely by Bashford Court. But it was my opinion at the time that our current code didn't allow for enforcement of no-back-in parking. So we asked PD to either move towards removing the no-back-in signs or updating the code, which is what they did. But yeah, to get to your question, we made a couple, one change from the last version you saw, and that was to clarify some language because it looked like back-in parking was prohibited throughout the city under the previous. And we changed that to make it clear that it's only where it's, the signs that say no park, back-in parking. But to Mayor, your point, it's an enforcement issue. And I think it's to their point as well, that this is an enforcement issue. And so when enforcing areas with timed parking, two-hour parking or other limited parking, PD doesn't have at least an automated process to enforce that time period. The Supreme Court case you mentioned said it was unlawful to mark tires with chalk. So that is no longer an option for enforcement. And so the automated plate readers in Arizona, you don't need a front plate, so back-in parking is difficult or impossible to enforce. So that's the change and kind of the background from PD of why they requested it.
Yeah, I think the proposal to refund hundreds of tickets that happened over the course of this ambiguous marking is just not, not practical in any way. Almost all of those, the fines go outside of the city, so we, beyond our ability to do anything about those.
And we were unable to find out exactly how much. There was kind of an overall price, but that involved both parking that was enforced for no back-in and for other purposes as well. So we didn't, and I didn't dig too deeply, but looking at those numbers, I couldn't find what was related to the no-back-in parking versus the otherwise. We did stop it when we found out about it and stopped those current cases that were going, but we did not go back, kind of back in time to refund people.
Well, I know personally, the number of contacts that I've received are much more concerned about consistent and ongoing parking enforcement. The number that come to me to say there's too much enforcement or that's, it's not sufficient is very, very small. So I'm going to err on the side of making sure that we do have more visible and accurate signage. And, you know, my concern about somebody backing over someone else is probably just as high as some of the huge number of new pickup trucks that have such a high frontal vision, you couldn't see anybody right in front of you, especially small children, things like that. So I think it puts a lot on the parents and the guardians and the people that are having young children to make sure that they are aware of that and can navigate a parking lot in a safe way. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, you've got three council members that wanted to comment.
Okay, who's up first? Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank both of the people that spoke. I really appreciate your comments, and I know that we had several email exchanges last year when you were ticketed. And while it may be impractical to refund money for tickets that were issued improperly, I think that's morally the right thing to do. If we have issued tickets improperly, then I think that we have the moral obligation to refund that money, number one. Number two, I totally agree with both of your comments. When the Police Department came and made their presentation to change the ordinance instead of changing the signs, I didn't like it then, I don't like it now, and I'm going to vote against this. I think that people should be allowed to back in. And there are other ways without chalking a car to timestamp when a car was parked. You could take a digital camera, and you could take a picture of the front of the car, and it shows you the date, the time, the location, and you could come back two hours later, and that car's still there. You can take another picture of that car. You don't have to chalk it, and you've got a record that that car has been there for more than two hours. I just think it's silliness that we're going to make a big deal out of not having a front license plate and people can't back in because we can't enforce a two-hour parking when all we have to do is take a picture in this modern day and age. And I totally agree with the philosophy of backing in. That is how people are trained to park. We back in for safety. And you look in our parking lot, and that's how it's done here, and rightly so. Those are my comments.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I basically just more or less agree with what Councilman Moore said. I'm not compelled, and I'll be honest, I, the Prescott Police Department, their presentation during the study session kind of glossed over this item pretty quickly, in my opinion. Certainly didn't provide compelling reasoning beyond, frankly, I don't even think they addressed the matter of the impractical nature of being able to note when cars were arriving. I think they just kind of said, we want the ability to make adjustments to signage, and didn't really go into a whole lot of detail. And from where I sit, when, when we have had an issue where we've been ticketing people incorrectly, I think at the very least, to Councilman Moore's point, the people who've been affected by this deserve an apology. Whether or not it's practical or reasonable to give them their money back, to the point that one of the presenters brought up, only 19 of those dollars go to the City of Prescott. We'd have to do some sort of clawback system with the county. I imagine it would get messy. But I don't support this because I don't feel like staff has given me enough information to support it, so I will also be voting against this.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, and maybe I need to ask Joe this, but if I'm reading this properly, this only applies to city-owned property. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, parking is, can only be enforced on city properties, yes.
So people can back in any place else that the city does not own the property?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, we can enforce on private property. We don't.
Right. One last thing, the Police Department has advocated for this because they have a software, a reading, a reading system that they cannot see, obviously, if people are backed in. They can't see the license plate, which is what prompted this?
From the PD's perspective, excuse me, my mic was off. It's an enforcement question. So for them, their main push was, and there's some other stuff in here as well that was part of the presentation, but as it relates to back-in parking, it was a mostly enforcement-related issue.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
I wanted to ask a point-of-order question, but going back to Mayor Protam, I think you can't, the way it works now is if there's a sign posted, you can't back in, you can't back in. If it's not posted, you can back in. So it's not universal. A yes vote means what? When it comes time to vote, a yes is what, and a no is, means what?
So if a motion is made to adopt the ordinance, then a yes vote would approve the ordinance and change the code?
Which means you can't back in where it's posted.
Okay, any other comments or concerns? And I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion or a move to approve Ordinance Number 2024-1859.
I'll second that motion. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. So-
Councilman Gambogi, can you select your option, please? Well, you made the motion, so you're a yes. Passes 4-3.
We'll move on to regular agenda.
Public hearing regarding proposed increases. Oops, my computer just froze. Give me one second. Public hearing regarding proposed increases to City of Prescott water and wastewater rates.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Two weeks ago, we did a workshop on our suggested water and wastewater rate increases. If I get my PowerPoint up, please. I just pulled together some of the slides from that workshop. I just wanted to kind of recap the whole thing as part of this public hearing. We initially, council adopted a notice of intent that we were looking at utility rates in February, or, sorry, that wasn't on the consultant's calendar they have here. The report was published as required April 26. We had a council workshop where we spent two hours talking about water and sewer rates as well as impact fees. On the 14th, again, that's not required by statute, that was just an additional public information we wanted to get out of, out on this stuff. Today, we have the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is the actual consideration of the rate increase. Those rates, if adopted today by council, will go into effect July 1st of 2024. They are significant rate increases, not going to beat around the bush there. Water will be going up 13% July 1. There'll be 18 months before the next effective increase, which will be 11, and then they settle down to the 2% range for water. These are the rates, again, July 1. And then they will go to January of '26, and '27, '28, and '29. The resolution considers council adopting all those. This is the way we've been doing the rates for a while, is we look at them every five years and adjust a financial plan to achieve the capital and operational needs identified. Aquafer protection fee stays the same over that period because of the projects that were brought forward for it. Wastewater has light, slightly more significant rate increases, 18, 17, 8, 7, and 4. Again, these rate increases, water and wastewater, are driven by the significant capital needs out there. Wastewater is driven around centralization and expansion of the wastewater treatment plant at the airport.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been getting lots of public concern via various methods of communication about these rates. And, you know, that particular study session on the 14th, we were just racing to get through, covering all the information. We really have had time since then to sit down and digest it while the public has been coming in our direction. And so I have some questions that I'd like to talk about. As I went back and reviewed my notes on the 14th, one of the slides you used on that day was, and I think this was from Ref Telus, gave us a slide that showed at the end that you would be looking at financial plan alternate 1, alternate 2, alternate 3. We were presented on the 14th the proposed rates. And so my questions now are, are there any alternatives to the plan? I absolutely understand the capital plan needs. We have to invest in our infrastructure. I get it, and I'm totally aligned to that. So this is not a question of wanting to fight any element of the capital plan. It's a question of not the what, but maybe the how or the when, so that the public doesn't have to bear the first two years while we're also working on public safety, major transaction privilege tax. So is it possible to smooth, if you go back to those graphs with the rates, with the bars, is it possible, from a financial standpoint, to, I know we need to cost-recover, I come from a corporate America, I get cost recovery. The question is, is it possible to smooth this out, especially water? That's a huge first two bars, followed by small, small little bars.
Wastewater is actually larger, but we did smooth it out the best we could. The initial of numbers brought forward were significantly higher. The way we would be able to smooth that out would be to have public works defer more capital out to later years and put off projects, whether that was our centralization projects or other projects, those would have to be pushed off to later years.
Do we regularly finish all of our public works project in the year we budget them for?
We budget them over a period of time, and we do get close to that, that thing. Like I, like I mentioned, we did push out a bunch of projects to- Like I mentioned, we did push out a bunch of projects to get to this level. And Gwen's here can address, you know, how much they actually did have to push out to get the rates to this level, if you would like.
That would be, I think, good for the public to hear.
Good afternoon, Council. I don't have my notes here with me. However, I recall us pushing in excess of $30 million in projects beyond the five-year window that we had programmed in the five-year window, that we had to push out because the rates were just not going to be something that, you know, our customers could withstand. So we did push in excess of $30 million just in replacement. Most of our projects are about aging infrastructure.
That's what I was about to ask you to help the public understand.
Right. When new development comes, they build their own infrastructure. They build their own onsite and their own offsite infrastructure to support their needs. It's the aging infrastructure that's catching up to this community. You know, the oldest water pipe we still have in the ground is 100 years old. We still have a couple of those. Those aren't the pipes we're replacing. What we're replacing was our water production facility and our intermediate pump station. Those were both done in the last couple of years, and we finance those through debt, which are also helping to drive the rates where the rates are today. But as we go forward, we still have infrastructure that was built in the '40s, '50s, and '60s that we are trying to replace because it's really just beyond its useful life. That's really the short story. We have more detailed accountings of which projects are on the books, which projects took priority over other projects, simply because they're either failing or they have really high costs to keep them going. So those are the projects that ended up in the five-year. But I can assure you, we pushed in excess of $30 million in projects between water and wastewater. We, as a staff, we didn't look at just the water or just the wastewater. We looked at them together. And we said, if we have to have this in wastewater, then we need to cut more projects from water, so that the bottom line for our users is something that's sustainable.
Thank you, that was helpful. And anybody who's lived through your pipes bursting in your neighborhood, as I did last summer, going without water for 18 hours is not fun when you're not counting on it. So I appreciate the fact that the pipe is aging. So I don't have any questions, per se, now about your projects. I'm glad to hear you guys did push $30 million outside of this window. But now it's a question to go back to some of our policies, things like the debt service ratio of 125% versus 150%, or things like not to exceed, but only meet minimum cash reserves for two years. Is there other things from a policy standpoint the council could make to help ease what is looking like the first two years of pain?
The debt coverage ratios are dictated by WIFA. So no, we can't change those. Council cannot change those. City does not achieve those. City cannot borrow money. City cannot build projects. The cash reserves are not what's driving these rates. It's the needed debt for the water and wastewater line capital project. So no, I guess the answer is no. Councilwoman, there isn't a policy that the council can ease to reduce these rates. If council is unwilling to adopt these rates, the staff can go back and push projects. Again, as Gwen said, it could affect reliability of the system, you know, out long-term.
So basically, we're dealing right now, we, this council and the public, with the fact that we have such aging water infrastructure, that we've kicked the can as far down the road as you all feel safe for us to kick it any further. Am I capturing that sentiment correctly? I see all the heads shaking. Thank you. I appreciate your expertise. I'm done.
Mayor Protam can tell me. And by the way, Gwen, what is the current rate per 1,000 gallons for the lowest tier, up to 3,000 gallons?
It is water.
Water.
Oh. I, they didn't have that in their slide deck. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Because you're saying that the new rate is $5.10 per 1,000 gallons in the lowest tier.
Let me pull up that ordinance real quick here.
It was the residential customer bill impacts at different volume use for the residential 5/8 inch. Is that the one that...
It's going, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's 480 to 540 for that first tier. Is that your question, Mayor?
480 to 540.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's multifamily. 510 to 573.
I see that, but that's proposed to begin on July 1st.
Correct.
So what is the current rate?
It is, I'm sorry, I don't have that readily available here, sir. I can get that to you? You have, yeah, the rate sheet. Oh, there it is. Thank you. I don't know. 23. Thanks, Tyler. It's 444.
So that's going up...
The rate increases even across the board, Mayor?
I understand that. I'm not asking that question.
All right, it's going...
My question, your answer is it gone up 56 cents per 1,000 gallons for somebody who's in a single-family home using the lowest-tiered rate? So if I, 56 cents by 3,000 gallons, you're talking about...
Again, I didn't do it on the tiers, but we do have these rate comparisons. If these help, Mayor?
No.
On these amounts, looking at 5,000 gallons of water usage with the 3,000 wastewater usage, there, that's a combination of both rates, their bill would go up $13.59. And that's approximately the range that my family uses. If they have higher water usage because of a garden or grass, it will obviously go up more, as you see there with the...
So if you're using 40 gallons per person per day, you'd be right around 3,000.
Okay.
So 5,000, to me, is a lot of use, because we use drip irrigation, and we use low-water use plant pallets in our property. It's a whole acre, so it's bigger than a lot of properties. So let's get it down to the practical cost. So you're probably talking about maybe $10 a month to be able to upgrade our system if you're a single-family home water user and you're using your water conservatively. If I go over 40 gallons per person per day, I have to start thinking about how are we using it? Am I watering after 8:00 in the morning or before 8:00 in the evening? I think all of us, as water users, have to embrace the fact that we need to use our water conservatively. We have low-water use utilities, appliances in our home. We have rebates that we're giving out to the community to maybe make an investment in the lower water use appliances. That's why we've put this whole water management policy into effect. So let's not worry too much about somebody who uses 10,000 gallons a month. Maybe they ought to put in a rainwater harvesting system or some other way of using excessive amounts of water, or maybe they should rethink about how they use their water. So if we can bring this down to a practical individual's concerns and not focus so much on the percentage increase, but how you use your water at home, then these are going to be small increases that I think everyone can live with, and then also realize, when they do get a big bill, they can start to say, how can I use my water more effectively? Maybe move myself down into one of these lower tiers. Council, Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the graph that had the little towers on it?
Oh, okay. Which one, water or wastewater?
Water. Okay, is that it? Yeah, water rate. So when I saw this graph, I was surprised myself. So I decided to do a little digging. I started digging originally through the structural impact fees to try to understand how we were not keeping up with the times. So what I wanted to ask you, Mark, is in 2019, when we had our last water rate, infrastructure impact fees study done, the council at that time chose not to adopt the increases that were suggested. Did that also, that was for the structural impact fees, was that also the case with the water fees in 2019?
The impact fees?
Yes.
This is about the water and the wastewater rates?
Right.
Item C is about impact fees.
Yes, coming up.
Okay.
But isn't that, the impact fees that were charged are also for wastewater and sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, that's item C today. This is item A and B, but...
No, I'm asking, did you...
The full water rates were adopted back in 19.
So they were adopted? The increase was adopted?
Yes.
In 2019?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking back at the minutes and things from some of the increases back in 2019, some that were adopted and some were not. And I was wondering if this fell into that case?
No, there was some of that in relation to the new impact fees that were adopted in 19, the police, fire, and streets.
Yeah, I want to talk about that in a few minutes when we get to that line item, but thank you. I wanted to find out about this.
Those changes did not impact these rates. These rates are impacted by the capital plan and the $130 million worth of debt these two utilities are holding right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I'm in the 3,000, our household's in the 3,000 gallons a month range. And, you know, we have a tiered water system that our mayor initiated, and the reason why it was initiated is to encourage conservation. So if you're conserving your water and your bill isn't going to go up that much, but if you're wasting water, then you're going to be paying more. And I'm looking at this graph, and it's $5.10, the new rate for the first year, but after five years in 2029, I'll be paying $1 a month more over a period of five years. So I think that's something that I consider, something that is an investment in our community. Jackson, Mississippi, which is a capital city, has a totally failed water system. The federal government had to step in and fix it because they had dry taps because it was poorly managed, and they did not invest in their infrastructure. So I think our city staff should be commended for doing the research and telling us what it's going to cost to invest in this critical infrastructure. So thank you.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for Gwen, if you are willing to come back up, Gwen. I just was curious. You mentioned in the water rate study, in dealing with the increases, that you pushed $30 million of capital projects out for the next five years. I'm wondering, and I don't know if you have the history to know, but is that a common number that we push out on that? I guess what I'm trying to drive towards is, I imagine that your predecessor, and probably his predecessor, and that person's predecessor, at any given time, has to make hard choices about capital projects as they impact rate studies going forward. Is that accurate?
So without aging myself too much, I'll tell you, I've been at the city going on my 19th year. I've been involved in three rate studies in those 19 years. We always push projects, but I've never seen projects pushed to this degree.
So this was a lot of pushing to do to minimize the impact that we're seeing?
We've pushed projects before because we were worried about how it would impact the ratepayers, you know? One year, we adopted the water, the wastewater, and the trash all at the same time, and I think collectively, it was, it looked like it was a lot more than it really was for just the water and the wastewater, and so we pushed projects in 2013 for that reason. But we've always had more projects than we've had funding to do. We try to balance not just the financial side of projects, but we only have five project managers. You know, we only have so much staff to facilitate these projects, too, so we have to look in terms of our personnel and our resources across the board. How many projects can we reasonably complete in this amount of time? And smaller projects do not necessarily take less time. In fact, most of the time, the smaller projects take far more time than the really big projects. So it's a balancing act for us, not just with how much money there is, but how many, how much resources we have within the department to actually deliver the projects that we're putting in the capital. We have rules related to impact fees. In a few minutes, we're going to talk about impact fees. If we collect that money, we have to spend it within 10 years. So some of those projects come up higher on the list because we have to spend the money that we've been collecting on those projects. So there's a lot of different things that come into play when we choose which projects are going to end up in the five-year capital.
I appreciate that, and I understand the pressure that, and I've felt the pressure too, from constituents as well. This is a lot to bite off. Even my wife is annoyed at me for considering this. So I understand the heartburn people feel over it. But I also think that it's necessary that we invest our infrastructure and that we do so in a way that's prudent and necessary. And from what I hear you saying, in a way that previous councils have also kind of encountered this reality as well, that when it's time to raise the rates, you raise the rates, and everyone gets a little bit blowed back. I wish that, yeah, by college, hadn't increased their property tax recently, because, you know, to the average voter out there, all of that, including our proposed increase on sales tax, gets mixed in at the same time that we're in still a fairly high inflationary environment for a lot of folks. So it's unfortunate that we have to do this, but I think for the greater good, this is something that we have to countenance, and I appreciate the clarity you brought to it, Gwen. Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on to what the mayor said. I think instead of looking at the percent increase, it's maybe more important just to look at the dollar increase, because it's really going to vary by homeowner. You know, this proposed increase will affect those who use more water more than those who use less water, and that's something everybody has complete control over. And so I think when you look at dollars and cents, at the end of the day, it's really not going to be a significant dollar increase per month, while the percentage may appear to be high. We've had historically pretty low water rates for a long time. And while I'm never in favor of paying more money for goods and services, I do think it's a reality, and these are enterprise funds, and it needs to pay for itself, and we need to fix our aging infrastructure, and I'm definitely in favor of this increase.
One other thing, I mean, the staff went through this in great detail. We spent a lot of time working on the capital plan, but some of this capital just needs to happen. If it's a road project that's happening, we got to do the water and wastewater at the same time. We don't want to come back, and all that went into the thought process, which, again, is why this report is 170-some pages out there. It's taken us nine months to get to this point.
Please describe how we set the wastewater rates for individual utility accounts.
How we set the wastewater rates? It's done the same?
How we measure them?
Oh, the wastewater rates are set based on your average winter consumption.
Right.
So it's from October through April, set every May, to what your new average is. If you're new and don't have an average, you get the average of class. So residential rentals have four, I think it's 4,400 is the average that we just set this month.
Yeah, a lot of people don't realize that, because we don't actually measure wastewater coming out of a home. So we take the use of the water during the least-used period of the... So we take the use of the water during the least-used period of the year, when you're not watering outside landscaping and things like that. So we take that and then we set that as your wastewater rate for the whole year. So that's something that I think most people don't understand. And we're not increasing that because it'll depend on how you use your water during the winter.
Absolutely, Mayor. There are provisions, if you had a water leak or something like that during that time period, you can submit that information to utility billing and we adjust out anomalies like that.
There's many steps that can be taken by the individual user to decrease the amount of water they use. We have these multiple rebates in the city for low-water-use toilets, for low-water-use washing machines. Those investments can really pay off when they start considering where they are in these rate structures. I mean, I've told members of Seawag, if I've got landscaping out of my yard that needs water, it's not my kind of landscaping. So if they're well-established and they don't need water, I love them. I mean, I even made the point when we put in landscaping at our new airport terminal, I was looking at the species that the contracted landscaper had put in there. And they were not, they were not low-water-use off the plant pallet. So I had to point that out to the airport director and said, "We aren't even following our own guidelines. Get rid of those plants and bring some in that meet the low-water-use plant pallet so that we can be able to say we follow our own guidelines." And I think there's a lot of people that will go to Home Depot or Lowe's or something like that and buy landscaping plants that are really inappropriate for this area. They use way more water than you should be using if you reference that plant pallet. So you can make multiple decisions to lower your water use, get in these lower tiers, and see a minimal increase. Like I said, I think mine's probably going to go up maybe $2 a month. I think I can handle that. But I think everybody should look at where are they, what they can do to lower their rates so these impacts don't affect them as much. And then we have the revenue to be able to maintain our water systems going into the future. Now, I'm the president of Northern Arizona Municipal Water Users Association. So we've got Sedona, Flagstaff, Camp Verity, all these people that are part of this association. And when, go back to that other slide. When you look at comparing, some people see this slide and they'll say, "Well, Prescott's right now at $88 and Flagstaff's at $51, and now we're going to go to $101." Well, I've talked to the people in Flagstaff and they have the same concerns because they have to set their rates every five years. And they said they're going to be going up substantially because they're right at this five-year cycle. So these aren't static rates. Every single one of these communities is going to have to be looking at their rate structure. And they're probably going to have to set the same type of increases because of all the costs of inflation, components, labor, everything else that goes into maintaining high-quality utilities. So if we do our job well, we can manage our rates going into the future in a very reasonable way. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Eric?
You have public comments also, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a comment too, if you could go back to that same slide. You know, we just heard from Gwen about aging infrastructure. Well, Prescott Valley has only existed for 50 years. And it's a high desert grassland. It's a prairie. How hard is it to put a water line in a prairie compared to, how hard is it to put a water line in Hacienda where you got boulders and granite? And you have topography? And so there are a lot of things that affect our ability to do infrastructure in the city of Prescott that other communities like Chino Valley or Prescott Valley don't deal with. They're flat. They don't have boulders and granite. And so our costs are higher because of where we are and the topography we have. So I think that's important just to take into consideration. Nobody likes increases, but this is the reality of where we live.
Okay, yeah, I was on my soapbox here, so we'll entertain public comment.
Deb Thalassitis.
I'm breaking a New Year's resolution here. Deb Thalassitis, 1972 Meadowbrook Road, Prescott. Something's been bothering me for a while and I wanted to just ask a few questions. I understand all the reasons for the rate increase. My neighborhood is one where the mains break regularly. We have a project that's been delayed now, I think, four years. That would fix a lot of it. So I'm not against the rate increase, but I have some questions. There's a relationship between the user fees and the plant, or, plant investment fees. They're called development impact fees here. And even though Gwen said the developers put their own infrastructure in the ground, that is true, but they don't put the capacity in the plants. So what I did is I went back and I looked at the development impact fee report that Mark, the finance department, does every year. I went back to 2016. We started in 2016 in water with a negative $1.2 million deficit. It is now $13 million in fiscal year 2023. In wastewater, in 2016, it was 4.9 million deficit. We're now up to 16.2 million in a deficit. Prior to 2020, the report footnoted that the deficits were covered by fund balance, which is true, which means current users are paying for some of the growth. That is not abnormal. That happens everywhere. Typically, current users front money for capacity, to build the capacity. And then when you collect the development impact fee at the time a building permit is pulled, the current users in theory get paid back. Except we're falling pretty far behind. We went from, on average, between 2016 to 2000, or FY '23, it was a 46% average deficit increasing every year in water. And it was lower in wastewater. It was around 20%, which is what you would expect to see, I think, more normally. So I have three questions. And I guess I couldn't find it in the materials and I do apologize if I missed it and you've talked about it. I'd like to know from the rate study, what percentage of our user fees are going to front-load payments for growth-related capacity? That's different than what you guys are talking about with our aging infrastructure. I'd like to know what the industry standard is for that because it does happen across the country. That's the way the system works. But are we abnormal? Which would mean our development impact fees are probably not high enough. And that's the third piece. You're looking at the development impact fees on, for all of the things covered in that ordinance. But for water and wastewater, are we aligned with industry standard? Is 20% kind of what you would expect to front-load as a user through your user fees, your rates, your water and sewer rates? Or is 46% normal? 46% on my experience seems pretty high. So I think the two are interrelated and it feels premature to adopt this today without having the answers to those questions. So, thank you for listening.
Mark, can you comment on that?
Sure, be glad to. Yes, it's quite common. We have to build capacity to sell capacity to do construction. So we build an intermediate pump station, which is a huge investment, $65 million. A half of that is related to new needed capacity for growth across the city, not just in North Prescott, but it's across the city. That growth, that capacity, that $30 million in that one project won't be used for 50 years, for 80 years. So we'll get paid back. What percentage is appropriate industry-wide? It depends on the project. A project like the intermediate pump station is a 50-year build-out, maybe build-out of the city. So whenever that happens, that will all get paid back. Are our impact fees adequate? Our impact fees are looked at at the same time as this study. We're going to be talking about that in a little bit. The impact fees are as high as legally possible in the state of Arizona. We don't reduce those. We have no ability to increase those over what the consultant has brought forward as the maximum allowed impact fee. So we are collecting them. There is, as part of the study out there, an appendix that shows that loan, if you will, between the two as we build capacity and then get it paid back. And we do see some payback starting to happen on the negative in the out-years of the study was for a 10-year period. It won't be totally eliminated for sure. Only a small amount will start to be paid back. Again, a lot of these projects we're building are for the build-out of the city, of the corporate limit. So it's going to take years to recover those funds. And, you know, the way state law is structured, you know, if you don't, if you don't build on every lot, you're never going to recover them all. But that's the way the system is set up in Arizona. I hope that answered the question.
I know it's very, very difficult to compare averages with other municipalities around the country. Let's face facts, Prescott is a very unique place. We've got hills and we've got dells and we've got lift stations and we've got storage tanks on top of hills to create more water pressure. We've got to have pump stations to move wastewater and water up the hill. And our capital cost relative to the population is quite high because of that. I mean, Councilmember Rusing and I, when we looked at the propensity for using polyvinyl chloride water pipes because they're so commonly used around the country, well, guess what? Those, if those pipes aren't meticulously placed, then they fracture because of the underground topography that we have with fractured granite and things like that. And we've had multiple high-volume failures in water lines around the city because of PVC use. So we said, "That's the end of that. We're only going to allow ductile iron to be put into our area because of the unique topography here." Now, that's not going to pay off until all these PVCs fail and are replaced with ductile iron. But that's an example of the higher costs that we have to deal with because of the nature of our city. So I think our concerns here, whether it's impact fees or wastewater rates are a reflection of that. So it's really difficult to be able to say, "How do we compare to the average?" Because we're not average. We're unique, we're special, and we're the greatest city in this state.
That's all, Mayor.
At this point, we can now entertain a motion.
This is a public...
Mayor, this is, the motion would be just to adjourn the public hearing. The adoption would be the next item.
That would be a good motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Please vote.
You can just tell me verbally, Councilman Gamboge. Want to close the public hearing, yes or no? Thank you. Passes 7-0.
All right, moving right along.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1889 and Ordinance Number 2024-1862 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title II, Chapter 2-1, Sections and Subsections, 2-1-12A, 2-1-12B, 2-1-18A, 2-1-18B2, 2-1-18B3, 2-1-18D, 2-1-18E, and 2-1-18K, Section 2-1-21B, Section 2-1-22H, and Section 2-1-57, adding a severance clause and providing for penalties.
Congratulations, city clerk. That was great.
And Mayor and Council, these are the rates that were discussed at the public hearing as well as in the study.
Questions, comments? I think we've already heard the public comments on this topic, right?
We do not have public comments on this item, no.
All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve, to adopt Resolution Number 2024-1889 and move to adopt Ordinance Number 2024-1862.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Mayor Protam and Councilman Gamboge. You can just tell me verbally. If it's not popping up, just let me know. Councilman Gamboge? Thank you. Passes 7-0. All right, public hearing regarding the Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Land Use Assumptions for Development Impact Fees.
Thank you, Sarah. As I mentioned earlier, on the, two weeks ago, we also, the majority of that workshop was spent talking about impact fees. This item is, we discussed, this, the workshop is on the Infrastructure Improvement Plan as well as the land use assumptions that we're bringing forward. The impact fee process is an extensive process, which we also discussed with the consultants. It takes a better part of a year to actually implement. Again, we've been working on this. I think we started in September. So staff's been having a lot of fun with the rates and the impact fees. We did give the public notice. We had our workshop. The first item is to have a workshop today on just those two items, the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan. The rates and the rate studies from that will be brought back on the 9th of July in a workshop. And then we will have a public hearing on those proposed impact fees on August 27. Then council will wait 30 days and have consideration of those impact fees on October 8. And if approved, those would become effective January 1 of 2025. Again, it's a very long statutorily dictated process. But today, we're just having the public hearing on the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan, which has been posted on our website and again, was the subject of a workshop two weeks ago. We had some preliminary rates discussed last week, but the actual final rates won't be available until the 9th of July. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I do have the PowerPoints the consultants used. So if we can find whatever you're asking and theirs, we'll put it up.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have just a general question on developer impact fees. What's our policy on waiving them or deferring them? Because when I was going through the paperwork on the hiring the Austin, Texas Economic Development Study Strategic Plan firm, one of their strategies was waiving or deferring developer impact fees to attract economic development. So I know in the past, like, for example, Touchmark, the developer passed the fees on to the residents and they're paying the fees for the developer. Who makes that decision? Is it administrative, made administratively? Or does the council vote on it?
So in Arizona, state law prohibits the waiver of development impact fees. If council chooses through an economic development agreement or something because of the overall economic benefit of a project to pay those fees to create jobs or whatever the statutorily allowed use would be, the city of council would have to identify and pay those fees generally from the general fund. As far as Touchmark goes, my understa, the, the Touchmark passing the, a fee of any kind, whether it's water bill or impact fee on to their customer is a contractual issue between Touchmark and their customer. The city, you know, can't prohibit that and wasn't involved in that decision. If you look at the economic development or the development agreement associated with Touchmark, we just talked about that fees will be... Touchmark, we just talk about that fees will be charged.
Okay. All righty, thank you for that clarification.
Anything like that, if council were, or the decision was made to pay them, it would be part of a development agreement that council would approve. But we have not had those--
Okay.
--for a long time.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Mark, going back to what you were just saying, I know Kathy was implying for economic development. And just for the public's knowledge, we do charge infrastructure impact fees currently. And I think you can see on the graph, well, when we had the study session, that they were very low and inadequate, and they needed to be raised. Then the subject comes for the above-ground, the structural impact fees, which were also very, very low. And in some cases, we're going to be increasing them threefold, maybe fourfold in some cases. So again, when Kathy asks, can the council not implement, make a choice to not implement it? I believe that's what happened in 2019.
Yes, and I apologize if that's what I said. When council adopts impact fees, they can choose to not adopt the maximum allowable impact fee.
That's right.
But if the council adopts an impact fee, everybody pays that impact fee.
Correct.
So I'm sorry if I implied that council didn't have the ability to charge a lesser impact fee. You do. When we look at the adoption of the fees on October 8th, council could say, as, as I recall they did with the new impact fees that were brought forward in 19, that they only wanted to assess 85% of them.
That's what I was referring to, because several people have asked me, well, why are we increasing them so much? And one of the things I've responded is because in 2019, there was a choice made from a commission, I believe, in doing my research, they decided to not raise the recommended impact fee that year.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't the commission. The commission suggested that and council agreed with it. So it's council's decision, it's nobody else's.
But it was based on the recommendation from the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
They, that was brought forward, yes.
So had, hypothetically, had that impact fee been raised in 2019, we would not be looking at a quadrupling or tripling of the impact fee today. We just didn't keep up with it. And now, in this review that we just paid for from Raftelis, their recommendations, as I said, in some cases are triple and quadrupled in a couple of other cases for impact fees. Now, this is the structural impact fees. So our fees are going to be going up below the ground and above the ground. And there, those fees are for exactly what they say, the impacts of growth. And it is a very convoluted thing. So when people say, well, I thought they took that away in 2012, they did to a certain extent. But then in 2014, through the Enabling Act, they went back and reviewed and made some changes where the impact fees could now be applied to police and fire. And that was in 2014 with the Enabling Act.
Did you have a question?
Well, no, I'm just trying to tell the public--
Okay.
--in response to the constant questions I've had, why are they going up so much? And that's the response. When they should have been raised a little bit in 2019 to keep up, they were not. And now we are raising them by today's standards. Thank you.
And just to clarify, you mentioned the term catch-up. And again, we're not, the increase is because they weren't high enough. It's not to increase the charge on current homes to make up for what wasn't collected because, again, that would be illegal and we don't do things--
I did not mean to imply that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
Right. But Raftelis is a reputable company that many municipalities use to review these impact fees. So I do want the public to understand, in order for us to go forward with this, I think it's important that we look back and understand why, partially why we're here today. And we are, as we did in 2019, weighing heavily on these reports. There was a choice made in 2019, and I, I hope that we don't make that choice today. I think these impact fees are needed, again, for all the reasons that we've all cited before, how things have gone up. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure the public understood that. Thank you.
Great, great point, Mayor Protam. And also, another thing, just to keep in mind in relation to this and the public safety tax, you can't make up for deficits in the system on the back of new development. So, you know, the fact that we, our public safety people will say we need to improve response times and patrols and all this, that is not something you can put on impact fees. We did consider impact fees in the modeling when we came up with the tax proposal. So that is considered, and the impact fees are part of that to the legal extent that they can be. The rest of it, to improve the thing, needs to be come from the general fund or the tax.
Did you estimate, I think I remember the graph, was 17 million for the, after the raise in the impact fees would be an estimated income from those impact fees?
I--
Was that what it was?
I believe it was significantly higher than that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was significant.
Seventeen, 736. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that was streets only.
Mayor Protam was describing below-ground and above-ground facilities that would be benefiting from these impact fees. Can you describe in more practical terms that the public can understand exactly what these impact fees are going to be used to, to build?
Absolutely, Mayor. The, the Mayor Protam was referring to horizontal or underground. That's our water, our wastewater, and our water resource fee. Our water resource fee is related to the purchase of the big Chino Water Ranch, recovering that cost for that future asset. That is not the cost of the pipeline, it's just the cost of the purchase of the ranch and may, and for bringing that into the system later. And only 80% of that, the other 20% is coming from water operations. And the water and, or the wastewater and the water are the lines and the ground, the treatment plants that are needed. The other infrastructure component would be the streets tax, which, again, it would be roads and intersections improvements to the extent that they increase capacity of those assets. Not, you know, we need to redo this intersection, you can only charge an impact fee for the increased numbers of cars that, that'll enable to go through there. And then the other one, the building ones, are for police and fire.
So these fees are not going to affect current residents?
Correct. They're only, they're charged at the time of building permit. There's some other issues, and not issues, there's other time parameters in the code related to the timing of the fees. But it is when a permit is issued, that's when the impact fees are paid. So the fact that there's a lot of houses that are, still need permits out on depot ranch, they will all be paying the new fees because it's at the time the permit's pulled for the house, not the subdivision.
So this is the whole concept about growth paying for growth?
Yes, sir. To the extent that the state legislature lets us do it.
Well, back in 2009, I believe, seven, Senate Bill 1525 was enacted that really related to above-ground amenities that new development would have to pay for. So things like parks and other recreation areas. It became very restrictive for small communities to be able to impose impact fees because of the incredibly high level of regulatory performance. You had certain deadlines. Any new projects had to be completed within 10 years. If they weren't, then everybody who is charged an impact fee would have to be refunded their money. And the question was, who gets the refund? The developer? The property owner? The new person that just moved in two weeks ago? And also, any person in those areas had legal standing to challenge their ability to have equivalent services. So that was specifically identified to be able to say, well, if I'm not getting, getting a fire response at the same level as somebody else in the city, then I'm going to challenge these impact fees. It was such a high level of performance that small communities could not even meet it. Now, if you're down in Phoenix or Tucson and they're building a 3,000-home development, they might be able to get all those parks and everything made in 10 years. But for smaller communities like us, it would just be impossible. I tried to get the Arizona League of Cities and Towns to push for an exemption for any city below about 50,000 or 70,000 from these requirements. But the, the state building lobby was so powerful that the Arizona League said, we can't even entertain this. Fortunately, just a couple of years ago, there was a change in state statute that said, well, you don't have to have them completed in 10 years. Now, if you plan them and you start to work on them and you can show that you're making progress, then you don't have to worry about this refund policy. So at least we have a little bit of latitude here on some of the growth areas. But I want to make sure people understand that we're doing our best to try to make growth, pay for growth when it can. And we do have to pay, play catch-up to a certain extent. And I understand Mark's objection to that phrase. But when we have people out in North Prescott that are waiting over 11 minutes for a 911 response, when we have people in the downtown area that maybe is a quarter of a mile away from a current fire station, and they're getting a response in five or six minutes, that's just not acceptable. So that's why we have to have equal protection of the law, and that's why we're talking about this public safety tax, which I can't bring up today because it's off-topic. So I apologize. But I just want people to understand that we're using these impact fees to be able to provide the infrastructure we need in those growth areas. And we'll do a catch-up on a separate topic. Boy, man, I've been on my soapbox today, haven't I? Councilmember Rusing?
Sorry, you said it all for me. Thank you.
Have any public comment here?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Well, I guess in that case, I can entertain a motion.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilwoman Freworth, do you have any objections to closing the public hearing? Passes seven zero. Adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-1861 in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning of certain property within the City of Prescott, generally located on 1646 Iron Springs Road from residential single-family SF-18 zoning district to Business General BG zoning district, and approval of WSA 24-017.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Tammy Dewitt, community planner. So the request for use of rezoning, this is about a 2.14-acre parcel off of Iron Springs Road. The current zoning of the property is SF-18, single-family. The proposed zoning is Business General BG to allow for a 36-unit RV park and amenities, which include an office, two full bathrooms, and laundry, which is required by our code. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 6 to 1 on April 25th. And 2.1 acre feet of water per year was recommended approval by Water Issues Subcommittee on May 7th. So this is a map of the property. It is located kind of southeast of Williamson Valley Road on Iron Springs Road. As you can see, the current property is SF-18. To the east is Business General. To the west is multifamily, medium density, and there's apartments there. Then across the way, we do have other commercial zoning districts in this area. This is the subject parcel. It is vacant at this time. There has been no plans before that I know of to, for this property. So the applicant has purchased the property and has brought this application forward for your consideration. This is the proposed site plan. It is conceptual, but it will have to be, if approved, in substantial conformance. If this application is approved, they, they will have to apply for a conditional use permit, which we would see a more defined site plan at that time with some more information to go before the Board of Adjustments. The idea is to look at any conditions that can be imposed on the property to try to mediate any impacts to the adjacent property owners. And that will be discussed with the applicant pending the outcome of this hearing today. So staff from various departments did review the conceptual project. There are many things they will have to do. They'll have to get their engineering, they'll have to do a traffic impact analysis and such if the rezoning is approved. So we will get more details later, mostly with their conditional use permit to make sure that they're addressing any impacts to the adjacent neighbors. To the west, like I said, there are apartments. To the east is a commercial office. To the south are pre-existing mobile home and other RV parks that have been on this area for a very long time. The general plan, the 2015 general plan designated this area for commercial, so the proposed rezoning does meet this designation. So there's no general plan amendment required for this proposed use. So the recommended action is to move to approve WSA 24017 and the Ordinance 2024-1861. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also available here to answer any questions.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, and audience, listeners, I've gotten, and I'm sure we all have, a lot of emails and concerned people in the general area about this development. And the concern of going from a low-density, single-family plot into Business General, basically. And I was able to get, I went down to see Chelsea. I got a copy of the actual requested new zoning. And I think after speaking to many of the people that have contacted me on Sunday about this development, I think the biggest, if I'm going to drill down to all of their complaints, that it came down to two complaints, and I would love to be able to speak to the applicant about that. They were very opposed to the fact that this change in zoning would allow tents, tents for overnight camping. And their fear is it's going to become an encampment because we've provided, or they will have provided showers and bathrooms and a place for, you know, potential encampment. And they, they just want, and I'm looking for some guidance, probably from, from you, Tammy, and maybe even from our attorney, Mr. Young. How can we prevent the tents? Can we put, can we ask the applicant to put a time limit on the tents, you know, maybe a week? How can we prevent that from happening? It's, the owners have said it's a recreational, it's an RV center, or what are they calling it? An RV park, which implies recreational vehicles. But the ordinance allows tents. So are they here? I'd like to be able to speak to them about that.
Yeah, I'll defer that question to the applicant.
Okay. And while they're getting up here, the other concern was, there is no fencing detailed in any of this conceptual drawing. And I think the people that live in the area were very concerned about that. We had a situation that just happened not too long ago where the owner's interpretation of fencing was a chain-link fence where everybody could see what was going on. And they would like to request a solid fencing so that the RV, the recreational vehicle park with intermittent visitors and barking dogs and all of that, they could do, you could do the best you could do to shield them from the, what's going to happen in the, the RV park. So as I said, there were other complaints, but the two that I probably give a little validity to is the ability for a tent camper to come in there and pretty much stay open-ended. And then the shielding through landscaping and solid fencing. Would you be amenable to that, those changes? And maybe you can address that.
Hi. To address the first with the tent camping, it's funny, we just had this conversation the other day because--
Come closer to that, Mike.
Sorry, we just had this conversation the other day if we were going to allow-- Sorry, we just had this conversation the other day if we were going to allow tents, and we aren't going to allow tent camping. This is more for seasonal travelers, nurses, professionals, people that need a place to stay for a few months, obviously sites for people to come visit. We're going to have a few campsites, like the, is it the airpark that has the cute little airstream set up? And you just, it's like an Airbnb, you come and stay in it. So we're thinking the sites on our left will be more Airbnb-style, come in, stay a night like a hotel room, you know you would. So we want to keep that idea in that we ourselves are travelers, campers. We live in a fifth wheel currently to save some money for the home we want to build and then start our business. So we're very aware of concerns at RV parks or even campgrounds, even just regular neighborhoods being a neighbor. And so we like the idea of short-term leasing, say, a month-to-month, even on a seasonal person, so that we could uphold our values and our rules of our park. If people aren't complying, then we can, you know, we don't have to renew for the next month, and that's for a longer-term seasonal person. But then you've got weekend campers that come just for a weekend, obviously. The most part is that. So tents, it's not, we don't envision at all a tent city that, to us, is a totally different meaning of homelessness or drugs, things like that. We don't want our business to go into some sort of disarray. It's not our goal. And we also are going to be living on the property and hosting it and then providing the management and things thereafter, kind of our retirement plan at this point.
Well, I've been hearing the words workforce housing, that this is going to be an alternative to workforce housing. And I'm not sure how that's going to work. Is the intention that workers will be living in their motorhomes?
Actually, I'm a nurse here in town, and I was a nurse in the valley, but I grew up here in Maryland. But in saying that, I did a travel assignment in Flagstaff at FMC, and I met several wonderful travelers that live in their RVs, motor attached or fifth wheels. I have a wonderful friend now from Texas, and she had her two baby girls and her husband, and they were saving money and traveling. And some of them had to stay in the parking lot of Flagstaff Medical Center because they either couldn't get space or they couldn't afford space where they needed workers. So this would definitely provide something for those people. It's fun to meet all these people. I've got one gal, I think she's up in Washington State now, but she was sharing her bread with us and her recipes and pictures of her cute little dog. And, you know, it's their home. It's not just something that, does that make, if that answers your question?
Well, yeah--
You know, it's not just some dilapidated thing. Like another friend we met this weekend, she lives in Kingman, in her travel trailer, and her husband passed away, and so she's very thankful to have a home. And she gets to stay in the RV park and work for them and save some money as well because they help her out with her expenses on her fixed income. So yes, things like that is, we're excited to help offer more of a, we were looking, because we live in Chino, we're from Chino Valley, the little homes that they built for Del Rio Elementary, which is where we went to school. And it looks kind of like a little concentration camp. You know, it's nice to have a little home, but these homes are very tiny and right next to each other. And I know it's hard to see from our site plan, but our sites are actually quite large compared to a lot of places, so they have more of a yard, an area, so even for the longer term, more of a comfortable living space.
You know, and I think that all sounds wonderful, and I think everybody thought the presentation sounded wonderful, too. But they are interested in the future and how is it going to work? And how can we control the potential of this becoming a tent encampment? And if you would be agreeable to striking that, because it is in the zoning request, you would be, and anybody that were to buy this from you in the future would be able to convert it. I understand the process is going through, and I'd have to talk to the staff about this, but in order for you to be issued a conditional use permit, I believe that you'd have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment to make an agreement for those two items. Either shorten the tent down to five days or a weekend and provide a solid screening to protect the neighbors around there. If you'd be willing to do that, then maybe there's an avenue, we can direct staff to write that up and make sure we codify that so that it moves forward with whatever you decide to do in the future, because those residents are there and have been there a long time.
Sure. Yeah, and we don't feel that the tent camping fits into our plan, so we don't have an issue with that. Now, with fencing, what I wanted to bring forth, it's hard to see sometimes with the photos, I don't know if you can show aerial photos. We really like this parcel because of the beauty and the trees. So on the left-hand side, I believe that's to the west, right? It's probably 15, 20 feet of rock. Like, that's a rock mountain that comes into our property. So to put a fence there would take away from those campers' experience and not provide any additional boundary. On the front, we want to provide more of a sound barrier wall, but we also don't want to take away from the view of thumb butte or the trees. But, you know, I think a reasonable sound barrier wall up front, and that'll help our campers or RV, or residents, or however you want to say it--
So have you--
--provide them. But now on the backside, we also notice when we go visit the property and frequent it, we see people hiking through there, going to the back, because the parcel is actually in a valley. Even the homes up on the right, I think there's only one that you can barely see from the property. All the rest are up on top of the mountains. I don't know their view exactly on us, but I know from us up, it is very high on that side. And on that, in saying that, the valley comes down, there's a sewer line with sewer easement. There is still a lot of beautiful landscape, because the accounting building right next door, they own that behind them as well, and it's all solid rock, solid rock mountain, pretty high. I hate to put a solid wall to take away from their experience.
Well, do you think that you could figure that out and give us some kind of a diagram as you move through the rest of these inspections?
Of course.
And I understand the rocks, you're not going to build a--
Right.
--you know, fence up over the rocks.
Right.
But could you come back with some kind of an idea of where you could put a solid fence to protect the residents in the area, and your residents, too? And I get the fact that I did walk that parcel the other day, and there's a lot of great trees. But there are areas I can see, and sound does travel up. And so just do your best and come in front of us, and if you, you know, would agree to put some kind of a barrier between your development and the other residents on both sides of you, I think it'd be greatly appreciative, and I think it would help you in the long run, because I know these people are very concerned, because there's, the ordinance allows you to do a lot of things. And again, I know your idea, I can see your concept, but to protect them going to the future, I would really like it if you would come back and address those two issues.
But those are the things that we were going to work with them with the conditional use permit, because that's the venue to add the conditions to the use, be it through the conditional use permit with the Board of Adjustments.
I agree, but I think we need to have their agreement today--
My question is--
--to be able to deal with those.
--if high as the sides are, how is a, say, five- or six-foot wall going to prevent sound from traveling up? I could see, because even living in the valley, they put sound barrier walls for the freeway to go across, right? But when we're down that far below, I'm trying to understand why a five-foot block wall is going to prevent sound from going up 30, 40 feet, 50 feet to the mountain above.
Well, if you look at, if you see your word "subject parcel," see where the "S" is, the very first word, "subject," that corner was in particular a concern with that whole apartment complex right there, because that is a direct line. And then, you know, you made a point about people hiking through the area. That was another concern, that all of a sudden, all of the participants in your property are going to be hiking up through all of their living quarters and where they are. So I don't want to take any more time on this--
No, that's helpful to point out, because on the back, we can do that, because we don't want people traveling onto the school property. And again, the apartments are very high up there, that back corner, and like you said, the back line, we could put one there. I just, I was trying to figure out, putting solid wall along the sewer line and all those things, that's what I was trying to understand, how that would prevent--
Well, as I said, I'd support you today, because I think the concept is nice, but you're going to have to have some restrictions on it in order to get my support for that.
Sure.
And I think the support of the people living around there, I don't know how the other council members feel, and I'm sure they've been approached by these people as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rusi?
Yeah, there's a sewer easement on the east side of the property, and I don't believe you could build a block wall on top of a sewer easement, but maybe a six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence might be better. But I think something to, like, block the view of the neighbors. And then also, you know, a couple of miles up the road, we have beautiful granite basin lake, tenters can go out there and camp. But, you know, nowadays, you know, you just have to be careful of loopholes, people exploiting the loopholes. I mean, a couple of people with shopping carts could roll up and say, "Hey, we want to rent a space for the summer."
Why would we allow that?
And, well, they may say, you know, "It's allowed in the zoning," because they're activists now, they're unionized in California, and if somebody, a homeless shelter tries to make them do something, they call the lawyer. So you have to be very, very careful nowadays. And they could say, "We're going to take you to court because it's zoned tenting, and we're going to tent here." And, you know, you're going to lose in court. So it's basically for your protection, too, to get these regulations, conditions in writing and to protect you and the rest of the community from this becoming something that wasn't intended. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two concerns. The way it's being billed is it's an RV park, but I guess my concern is it could become more of a trailer park, and I think we want to maintain the fact that it's an RV park, so it's transient and not long-term. And so I know you mentioned maybe staying a month and have renewable monthly contracts, but I know, like, if you go camping at any state park, there's like a 14-day limit, and it keeps people moving. And I just don't know that I'm in favor of a long-term rental, just because I feel like that could change the nature of the venue. That's just a concern. And my only other concern is the density. I look at this picture, and then I look at the picture with that, whoops, go back to that picture, and I just don't see how you can retain the natural beauty of that area with that density. I just feel like the trees are going to be removed, and in order to create that kind of density, it's going to change dramatically the property. I realize it's your property, but you talk about the trees, and if we're going to keep the trees, I don't know how we can maintain that density. So those are my two concerns.
I think, Tammy, are there photos added on there? I know this isn't another park, but to try to give an idea how big those spots are compared to other parks.
There were some pictures that say "if needed" that were added on a different presentation.
I don't know if that helps to see an actual site of someone else's park, to understand how wide our spaces are. Because on a 2D drawing or 1D--
But if it's a wide space, and can't they just take a, I mean, you're going to have a bigger footprint for RVs or something, and so how are you going to have a tree there if you're going to have an RV there? Because you've got a paved spot like these pictures--
We're not going to pave it like that, but the trailers, even that, so that car is probably, what, 10 feet long, five and a half feet wide, the car. The RV, I said ours with the slide-out is 11 feet wide, and 30 feet long is the general average for a fifth wheel. I know an RV with the motor coach is a little longer, maybe 40 feet. So in saying that, say, 11 feet with the side pop-out, our spots are a minimum of 30 feet. So that site you see right there, from pavement on the one side of the truck to the dirt is only 15 feet. Our sites will be double that width. And it's hard to tell from a picture, but being in that park, it was really nice, actually very clean. Everybody's trailers were newer. We can limit the age of the trailers, the condition, we can inspect them, things like that. But our sites are going to be twice that width, just for one site. And that site, how deep do you think? His truck, he has a Dodge Megacab, so consider it maybe even a four-door with a long bed, is 20 feet long, his truck, and our fifth wheel is 30 feet. And then it slides about five feet underneath the trailer. So in full length, it's 45 feet long. And our site minimum is 30 by 40. So obviously, the 40-foot sites, they'll have to disconnect and park next to, but they have a total of 30-foot width to park. There won't be sites that can be doubled up or more than one trailer on the site. And then we chose, we have some common area, we're going to put a gazebo, fire pit, things like that. There's a lot of nice rock areas that we're going to clean up for people to relax, maybe have a venue, maybe have a band play or something like that. But we opted to make some of those sites a lot longer and give the occupant more space within their space. And we'll have some, these don't have any privacy fencing in them, like, we would have, they could bring their table, we'll have like a little side fencing, so they'd have a little separation as well. But again, it's, they're the size of a three-car garage width, and then a lot deeper. Some of, most of our sites, we had, how many? Some of our sites are 80 feet long. So quite a few, the minimum number is 30 by 40. Most of them are much larger than that. So I hope that helps a little bit. It is hard to tell from the basic site plan, because we're just trying to get through a rezone and save our money for the engineer we're going to get soon, hopefully, to give more detail. But that's a pretty standard truck and trailer setup.
And maybe to help with some of the conversation, if I've been doing, I did some research on what some of these, the RV, well, more resorts that have more amenities, but they charge, they're ranging between $50 to $70 a night. So it's not something that Joe Schmo off the street's just going to pull up, probably. That's like, unless there's fire restrictions or something, you want, have places like this for people to get out of the woods. But it's not something that's cheap. And we can work with the applicant in regards to coming up for some camp rules. Even though our code says that tent camping is allowed, they don't have to allow for it, like anything in our code, that even though it's something that's allowed, if they want to restrict it, they can as a property owner and not allow it. So that's something we could work with for the conditional use permit. Where the fencing can go, there's different ways to do screening between the sites that can help minimize some of the visibility, too, which a lot of the campgrounds that have these bigger sites have done, that puts some buffers between the sites, too. So there's different things that we can do and try to, and I'm talking or worry with them about maintaining as much of the current landscaping as possible to help conserve the water usage.
Right, Tammy, and once we do the conditional use permit, those restrictions on that conditional use will stay with the property.
Correct, they run with the land.
So even if there were a change of ownership, those restrictions would still be--
Yes.
--included in how that property is maintained, used in the future, et cetera.
Yes.
So our concern today is just whether we're going to approve the rezoning from an SF-18 to a business general. Once that goes up, it doesn't come down. You can upzone, but you can't downzone.
They could, but I've--
Without compensating the owner--
Yes.
--for the loss of value.
Correct. And this is a commercial corridor, Iron Springs, this isn't a residential area. We have a lot, it's a lot of commercial right next door to it, so it's consistent with the adjacent zoning.
It's consistent with the surrounding zoning.
Yes.
And then also approving the water service agreement, which I think 2.1 acre-feet probably is reasonable for the number of RVs that would be there, and they would hook up to water and a, but they also have a wastewater connection as well. Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusi?
I was looking at your narrative under "site-built" buildings in the last sentences, talking about the proposed common area, and said, "Park will have a 20-foot-wide by 20-foot-wide by 13-foot, 6-inch-high at the apex." And I was just wondering, what is that? Is that a gazebo? I think it was kind of a typo or something on it. So it's going to be a gazebo back there?
Yes.
Okay.
And it may change as we get to get in there and see how much, if we make it bigger.
And then to reinforce what you're talking about, healthcare employees. We have a friend who has, he and his wife have a home here in Prescott, and he works at imaging centers. He's an X-ray tech, and they have a beautiful fifth wheel, and they travel around the state. He gets jobs for three or four months at different imaging centers, and they stay in these resort RV parks, and that's how he serves the medical community. So this is getting more and more common, I think.
Yes.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Mayor, I just wanted to see if we had any public comment. I know there's been a lot of people here waiting for a moment, so just curious about that.
We do.
Mayor Protem?
I just wanted to get some instruction on how we can move forward.
Well, let's take a public comment first.
Mike Van? Mike Fan.
Thank you. I'm running late, so I'll be very brief. Mike Fan, 132 North Monizuma, speaking on behalf of the Workforce Housing Committee. We've talked about a lot of tools to help with workforce housing. And what we heard from the police department, the fire department, and the school district, all three, was one of those tools is finding transitional housing. Some of those employees, workforce, indeed are, can afford some rentals or afford a house, but they don't have any place to live in the meantime. And so what we heard from them is one of the tools that's needed is just some transitional housing. It could indeed be a month or two or three, but a place for them to set up an RV, set up a trailer, whatever they have, to give them a place to stay until they find that home to find here. This is a tool in our toolbox. So I would encourage you to say yes to the BG zoning and let the details be worked out when you get to the, when to that stage of the game. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, let's wrap this up. But Mr. Young, how do we move forward here and assure that during the special use permitting, that they can address these issues?
Yeah, so you can't really ensure it, because it's the discretion of the Board of Adjustments. But just to kind of back up, you're not approving the RV park. You are in terms of water. So when you vote on the water, it will be tied to the use as an RV park, and it will be limited to that use. But the approval on the rezoning just brings it to business general, and they can do anything that's allowed under business general. RV parks only are allowed through conditional use permit. I think to the extent that no tents allowed is important to council, I've heard it a few times, if that's important, now's the opportunity to direct staff, that you have it on, some sort of agreement on record and direct staff to suggest or request that that be a condition to Board of Adjustments. But again, it's in, it becomes Board of Adjustments discretion at that point.
Okay, Tammy, it's what he said.
Noted. The tents and fencing, so those are the two concerns, of screening and the tents, so we will work with them.
And keep in mind, if Board of Adjustments approves it without those restrictions, the only appeal is to Superior Court. Right? It doesn't come back to council.
Correct.
There's no overruling that.
Correct, that goes to Superior Court.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I was a little unclear on the fencing part, and I will say that I did hear from the school district. And the one thing, they had no objection to the proposal rezoning, but they did express that they would like, and it sounds like the applicant is into the idea of not having their tenants cross over to the school district's property either. So I think, given that adjacency, fencing would be good for that. So just wanted to emphasize that part. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve WSA 24-017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
And number two, I move to adopt ordinance 2024.
Hold on, after you announce the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pass 7-0.
I didn't vote.
Are you a yes or a no, Councilman Gamboge? You're a no?
Yeah.
Okay, pass the 6-1.
Now, can I go? Okay, I move to adopt ordinance 2024-1861 in substantial conformance with the approved site plan and our requests. Can I say that?
Well, consistent with your direction to staff to request, yes.
Thank you.
SITE 23-015 and WSA 23-063, site plan review and water service application for QuickTrip fueling station and convenience store. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Kaylee Nunez, also a community planner. So here to present this site plan and water service agreement for a QuickTrip convenience store and pumps off State Route 69, 2280 East State Route 69, to be exact. So it would be just west of the Lowe's Center and a little bit east of the U-Haul. So this is an aerial view showing where it is off the highway. And Canyon Estates Drive is the drive adjacent to the west. So here's a zoning map. It is in business regional zoning and has been since we adopted the city's most current zoning map around 2002, I believe. So business regional is moderate to high-intensity business zoning. So here's an overlay of the site plan on the aerial map, just giving you an idea of how much of the parcel, the actual development's going to take up. Access will be via right-in only off of Highway 69. And then exiting or egress will occur to the east. It will tie to Holiday Drive, which is signalized. So here is a site plan, final site plan provided by the applicant. So this has been through a series of meetings prior to this. It went through three Board of Adjustment meetings for the conditional use permit. Of course, the planning and zoning meeting in February for the site plan. And then it went to Water Issues Subcommittee at the beginning of this month. So as a result of those meetings, there were conditions requested. So they have all been reinforced by the boards and committees. So one is to have a six-foot landscaping wall on the northern perimeter of the project. The other is to tie the approval to the site plan so that the undeveloped space to the north will be maintained, that buffer area. And then Water Issues Subcommittee did request that the underground storage tanks be moved from the east side of the development to the north to be further away from the wash. Here's a landscaping plan. So they meet all the landscaping requirements per the Land Development Code. And of course, the proposal was reviewed against our Land Development Code, Section 9.8.5, the criteria for a site plan. So that full analysis is, of course, in the staff report. Here's a summary. They meet the setbacks, the required parking spaces, again, all the review criteria per the Land Development Code. Ingress via Highway 69, egress via Holiday Drive. And then this site plan approval process was triggered by the prior water policy. So just a timeline there of all the applications received in December, and then it went through a series of boards and commissions. And then that last bullet point are the stipulations or the conditions that were put on the proposal. And also, I wanted to mention, the water service agreement is for 3.67 acre-feet per So these are the recommended motions, and I am open for any questions. We also have the applicant, Daniel Chambers, with QuickTrip here.
Have they committed to use the low-water plant pallet for all their landscaping?
Yes, that's required in any new commercial project in the city.
And how do we enforce that?
That is checked at time of plan review by the public work staff.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you. I've patronized several QuickTrip service stations, mini-marts across the state, and I've always found them to be clean, in good repair, well-maintained, safe, staff helpful. And I've always been impressed with them. And we, at the Water Issues Subcommittee meeting, we had an extensive conversation with the applicants and expressed our concern about the ethereal wash that borders the east part of this property between Lowe's. And it, I don't know if anyone's been out to Prescott Canyon Estates, it's, there's actually 200 units back there. It's a lot larger than you'd imagine. And the ethereal wash drains into a beautiful riparian area that winds through this Prescott Canyon Estates. And then it eventually ends up in Watson Woods, our future, hopefully, conservation easement area. So the applicant was requested to look into maybe moving the underground storage tanks away from the wash, and it looks like he's planning on moving them to the north. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for doing that. And then the other concern was the buffer, because the property does, on the north side, it's, you know, there's a manufactured home right there on the, on the border. And the applicant has agreed to leave, it's a huge granite outcropping with natural vegetation, and he's agreed to leave that as open space and as a natural buffer. So that was a plus. But my concern is, is there any way we could get that in writing? Or how does that happen to make sure that in the future, you know, the station's not expanded or the property's sold to be something else? Because, you know, anything can be blasted and graded here.
Yeah, so there's an easy way to do that. You tie the approval to the site plan as presented. Yeah, so if they wanted to change it, they'd have to come back through planning and zoning and council.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Kaylee, you mentioned that they were asked to put up, was it a six-foot wall?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Could you go back to the, thank you. Would the wall be right directly behind the building, or would it be at the back of the property?
So, I don't know if this answers, it's at the northern border of the developed portion. So you see that, yeah, Councilwoman Freworth is pointing at it. Let me go to, it's kind of like a hatched area. And so it's always been there, but I think the original plans called for like three to four-foot high. So the idea was just to increase the height a bit, to provide additional buffering.
Okay. One of the concerns I have is what I read, that it was a 24/7 hour, 24/7, 24-hour operation. And I like the fact that there's a nice buffer of natural landscape between the property or the development and the homes. But I am concerned about a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, just for the sake of those who live there. I mean.
Sure. Yeah, and that's a valid concern. It was brought up during Board of Adjustment, and, you know, I could have the applicant kind of address why that's important to their business model.
I would like to know why that's important, why we can't make an accommodation there.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is Daniel Chambers. I work for QuickTrip Corporation, and I office out of 1116 East Broadway Road in Tempe, Arizona. Councilmember, if I understood your question, you wanted to talk about the 24-hour operation. So one of the things that we do is we want to have just consistent offering at all the times, whether that's, people work different schedules, people are on different times. We want to be able to have a safe environment for anyone at any time to be able to come in and shop and use our facilities. It's very well-maintained, it's well-lit, it's something that we try to keep very safe so that if someone needs to get fuel, no matter what time that is, they'll be able to, they'll be able to get some convenience items if they needed. Also, a lot of people, if they're getting up super early in the morning to head down to Phoenix to go to the airport, they would have a place to stop that they can feel safe in. Another thing is that we are a safe place. And what a safe place is, is that's an opportunity for any at-risk youth to stop and get help. And so being open 24 hours allows any at-risk youth or any at-risk individual to come in and use the facility to get the help that they need.
And can I ask one more question, Kaylee?
Yep, yes.
Sorry, I noticed in your presentation that ingress was from the highway, but egress was from Holiday.
Correct.
So if somebody turned onto Holiday, they, it's going to be a one-way entrance or a one-way exit off of, out of the facility? I'm just not visioning how that's going to work.
Yeah, that's what I understand. I'm going to have Daniel clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah, so a little bit of a history, we worked, where we reached out to the Prescott Canyon HOA to work with them to see if we could have access off of their drive. Through that, that didn't work. That was something that they weren't comfortable with, and they don't want to pursue. So we pursued our own entrance off of ADOT. ADOT is giving us a right-in only off of Highway 69, and then the egress is out of Holiday. So you can come in through Holiday and exit through Holiday as well.
It wasn't mentioned, that's why I was asking for clarification on ingressing, egress off of Holiday. Thank you.
So you're going to build a, kind of a bridge across that deep wash between Holiday Drive and the entrance to QT.
Correct, we have to cross that wash. It'll be more of a culvert style. It'll be very similar to what ADOT installed, just upstream of us.
Well, that's a very high-velocity storm water runoff area.
It is, correct.
You go down to the area where the Canyon Estates trailers start to be visible, and they've got like four, four-foot-wide huge culverts there to handle that high velocity. So are you going to have something similar to that, to be able to have underneath your bridging area?
Yeah, it's going to look very similar to what ADOT installed as it crosses the road. It's going to be to match that, because it's, we're not changing the amount of runoff.
Yeah, they have a big box culvert, I think.
Yeah, correct, correct. So we'll have a box culvert similar to that that'll allow people to cross the bridge or to cross, cross, cross the wash and get to Holiday Drive.
You know, I also had a concern, because I've walked that parcel myself, and there's a solid blue granite area right, right off the road, and it goes in probably 90 feet. So looking at your topography map here, it looks like you're not going to take that down. You're just going to allow this entrance area, and then you'll have parking behind this big 20-foot-high blue granite.
Yeah, we try to, we try to work with the existing landscape or existing grade topography as much as we can to, to make the site fit and work, because it's, it can get very expensive, too. Once you start digging into that stuff, it can get very expensive very quickly. So when we do site design and site layout, that's always a consideration and a factor. We want to make sure that we're, we're laying out what makes the best sense for the site that still allow the safe ingress and egress and still allow safe operation and circulation once you're on site.
Yeah, that was a concern of mine. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did make some of the planning and zoning meetings when you were in front of them, and I know that there were a couple of concerns. I didn't get to hear the results of two of them. One of them, I'm assuming you're going to have to comply with the dark sky ordinance.
The photometric, yeah. So we will comply with all the photometric. One of the things that we've always talked about is that we provide, we're going to provide the city a photometric plan. And what a photometric plan is, that shows the light levels on the site. So we're not allowed to bleed any light over property, over our property line. That's something that you can't do. All of our lights are full LED cutoffs, so that means they're fully shielded. We voluntarily said that we would put shields on the back of the lights on our property so that there wouldn't be any bleed over to the residents, and we won't have any light within, it's over 300 feet of the closest resident, because we are not going to build past what you see here today.
Thank you. And the last thing was, I believe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, the resident spoke to you about late-night deliveries, like 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. Did you, how did you address that? I didn't get. did you address that? I didn't get to hear the end of it.
So we're anticipating about 15 to 20 deliveries per week at this store. Most of the deliveries do happen during the day, but there is sometimes that there is a third-party delivery depending on when the Pepsi or Frito-Lay guy, whatever his route is, that we don't have control over. So it's possible, but not likely. Most deliveries happen early in the morning.
Thank you.
When do you plan on starting construction?
That's going to depend on how fast we are able to obtain a building permit. I'm anticipating that we're going to have four to six months of review with the city, and then we would be able to start construction after that point.
And you're familiar with the fact that ADOT is going to be finally widening 69 right in front of your facility?
That's correct. So what we have drawn here complies with ADOT and meets what ADOT's future road is. We've been working with ADOT for probably nine or 10 months now at this point, to make sure that what our design is is compatible with what they have, and there's no conflict with them.
So they're starting construction on the widening on the 1st of July. So you'll be doing your construction while they're widening, because they expect that that's going to take probably maybe as long as a year?
It could take for them. I have not, they told me that they were trying to start this summer. I was aware of that. We would like to start this fall if, if you guys are gracious enough to approve us, and we would move to building permit next, so.
Yeah, so you guys are going to be constructing both at the same time?
There is a chance of that, yes.
Yeah. A very, very good chance, yeah.
Yeah.
Councilman Gamboji.
We've got into so much detail, I've lost track. So bear with me. These questions may be redundant. You have gas stations to the east less than a mile and gas stations to the west less than a mile. How does QT figure this pencils out?
Good question. So we are, we feel that we're different than a lot of our competitors, what we do and how we offer and the product that we offer. As was mentioned, I think one of our most valuable assets is our people, our employees. Typically, in an established market, for every 100 applications that come into the store, only one of those will make it, every 100 applications that are submitted, only one of those will make it to the store as an employee. So we like to be very selective on our employees to ensure that we have high-quality service, and the service that they do provide is adequate. We feel that there is enough existing traffic on Highway 69 to be able to support us, and we're excited to come to Prescott. Just excited to be here.
Now, earlier you were talking about people heading down to Phoenix and maybe needing gas before they go. So if somebody's leaving downtown, heading east on 69, how do they get into your gas station?
They will be able to enter off of Holiday Drive. That is a signalized intersection. So if they're heading east, they'll be able to, just like they were going to the Lowe's, be able to come in, make a left, and then they'd be able to make a left into our property.
Yeah. Just to clarify, Holiday Drive is the Lowe's entrance. So it's a drive you see to the east, if I didn't make that clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add on to Kathy's question about deliveries, will deliveries be in the front of the store or in the back of the store? What, what activity will be occurring in the back of the store, I guess? Period is my question, not just deliveries?
Yeah, fuel drop will be during, in the back of the store. We were asked to move the fuel tanks to the back of the store. So the fuel delivery will be there. That is about a 20 to 25-minute operation when that does come. There will be some deliveries that go in the back of the store, but a lot of the deliveries do utilize the front doors of the store.
Any more comments or concerns from council? Do we have a public comment?
We do. Karen Monks.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Karen Monks, and I'm the president of the Prescott Canyon Estates HOA, 2280 Prescott Canyon Circle. If I could ask everybody who lives in, is a resident of Prescott Canyon to please stand up. We felt this, we felt this was an important enough issue that we stuck through this long meeting today to be able to express our opinions, so I hope you can appreciate that. Before you are, an approval for a water service agreement application and a site plan for the QuickTrip gas station and convenience store that's located, as you've been shown, right on the southern edge of Prescott Canyon Estates. Prescott Canyon is a quiet 55-plus community with 255 homes, 400 residents, and we have 35 acres of creeks, wildlife, and trees and foliage there. I think when Councilmember Rusi came to visit us, she was really surprised by how it's serene back there. And if you look at it from the highway, it's not evident at all, so it's really easy to just say, well, this is a developed area. It's not going to hurt anything to approve it. I'd like to make a couple of comments just about some things that were discussed previously. One is about the six-foot wall. Every time it's mentioned, it's, the crosshatched area is what is, is pointed out. In fact, that's where the landscaping is supposed to be, but press, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved a six-foot solid wall across the entire back of the developed area, including the bridge. We have homes that are very close there. So to say that it's a landscape is not what the issue is here. We're looking for more than that. The other thing is, is that, Daniel? When he, when we've discussed this with Daniel, as far as your, your question about high, how high it would be, what they were going to do, we've been told that it's going to be ground down to five feet above the level of Highway 69, which we think is going to be pretty serious. We have homes that are basically on stilts. We, we have all manufactured homes. So when you start, if there's any dynamiting or anything like that, we're going to have damage to the homes, possibly our clubhouse building. And this happened when Lowe's was developed 20 years ago. We had people whose, their stoves ended up across the, their rooms. There were a lot of breakage in their homes, damage to their walls, and there was one entire home that was destroyed when part of the land from Lowe's fell into it. So we're really concerned about this. The other issue, thing that I wanted to point out about the discussion was the issue about the night sky. Yes, they're going to put lighting that is shielded, but we're way down below that. The houses that are closest are many feet below that. And I don't care what kind of shielding you put on there, you won't, you'll still be able to see the lights. We're adamantly opposed to this site plan and the water service agreement, mainly for four reasons. First, as I stated, the ground is unsuitable for underground fuel storage tanks. The site has a large granite formations with underground springs. When Lowe's built just east of the proposed site, the ground was so unstable that it damaged their building, their parking lot, and some of our buildings as well. Second, the QuickTrip location is uphill from our community in the creek that flows through it into Granite Creek, into Watson Lake, and then into the regional water supply. The wash that meanders through the site flows year-round, and it runs high during the monsoons. Runoff spills and leaks will pollute the water and deteriorate the environment in Prescott Canyon and beyond. The Subcommittee on Water Issues had QuickTrip modify the site plan to place the underground tanks further from the wash. They're still within a few hundred feet of the wash, and they're even closer to our homes than they were before. Finally, this matter has been prematurely submitted to City Council for approval. The plant, city planning representative stated previously that the site plan, if the site plan were modified, the matter would need to go back to planning and zoning for review as required by the water plan prior to submission to you. The specific site plan before you has not been reviewed by planning and zoning. They looked at a version of it, but not this last one. So you must send this matter back to planning and zoning, and then to the Water Issues Subcommittee prior to voting on this matter. Also, the water Subcommittee stipulated that QuickTrip enter into a legal agreement with the city that would restrict QuickTrip and its successors from developing the northern portion of the site, as Councilwoman Rusi recently stated. This restriction was imposed both by planning and zoning and the Board of Adjustment. A recorded legal agreement ensures a viable method of notification and enforcement of this restriction without resorting to obscure meeting minutes. To our knowledge, that agreement has been, not been finalized and recorded. And every time that anybody asks planning about it, they say, well, if they want to change it, they can go, come back to them. The issue is, we want it to be forever, and we need that legal agreement in place in order to make that happen. Once you approve the water application and the site plan, there's little impetus to finalize that agreement. For these reasons, 400 residents respectfully ask that you deny this water service application, reject the site plan, or remand it to planning and zoning for review and to the water Subcommittee. If you choose today to approve this matter, however, we ask that you once again put the restrictions in place that have been, have been placed on it by planning and zoning and by the water agreement, and also by the Board of Adjustment, namely that the northern section not be developed, and also that the six-foot wall go across the entire back of the property and that be a solid wall. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Tony Perry?
Real quick, I just want to touch on the idea that this needs to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission. So it is in substantial conformance with what was approved by planning and zoning. The only thing that has changed is the location of the underground tanks, which is actually not an element that they review per the Land Development Code. So...
Go ahead. If you want to talk, you can come up to the mic.
Hi, I'm Tony Perry, living at 2242 Prescott Canyon Circle, and I appreciate that you're listening to our appeal today, because the homeowners are here to continue our appeal to the city, to acknowledge the negative impacts that the QuickTrip project is going to cause our community. Before I spoke at the April 18th Prescott Board of Adjustment, I looked up the criteria that the board determines to base their decisions on. So I was going to their statute, and it says, "to impose additional conditions to carry out the spirit and intent of City Code 9.3.5, to mitigate adverse effects." So I went to these codes, knowing that this would be the way to appeal. City Code 9.3.5A is effect on environment, and it states, "not detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the surrounding neighborhood or its occupants, nor substantially injurious to neighboring property." And along with that, Code 9.3.5C is external impacts minimized, and that specifically calls out that the proposed use shall not have negative impacts in the area through the creation of fumes, noise, dust, vibration, and those types of things. So I looked up the effect of gas fumes on humans, and it says, "It's evident that the long-term exposure to gasoline fumes can lead to a high susceptibility for the development of health risks, including cancer." So now the latest proposal for QuickTrips is to have these five fuel holding tanks directly behind the store, which places them even closer to our homes. And just to say, a six-foot wall and enhanced landscaping behind the store will not stop the winds from carrying gasoline fumes into our homes and causing us health risks. So, you know, and we've heard all the precautions that QuickTrip is going to take to avoid gas leaks underground, but historically, leaks still happen. And when people fuel up their cars and tankers filled up the holding tanks, there's spillage, and that gets hosed down and cleaned up with water. That seeps into the ground and contaminates the soil. So then the monsoons come that carry this contamination downhill into our streams and lakes. The culvert on the edge of this property is the pathway of rainwater from the opposite hillside that runs under Highway 69 and through this project location. So again, the proximity of this gasoline contamination as well is, I think, a risk. So City Code 935D, infrastructure impacts, states to not have negative impacts on existing uses in the area, such as roads. And in some of the QuickTrip criteria, they say there could be an additional 500-vehicle trips per day at this business location. So to me, there's no question that this increase in traffic is going to negatively impact our safety of traveling in and out of our community, because it'll be right adjacent. And then 935E calls for it to be consistent with the general plan, and it states specifically, if the use is permitted outright in another zone, there must be substantial reason for locating the use in an area where it's only conditionally allowed. And in all the meetings we've attended, we've never heard any reason why this property would need to be, would be rezoned for a gas station. Specifically, we have ARCO a mile and a half away, 24/7. We have Quick, Circle K in the other direction, that's 24/7. And then the 76 gas station, which is less than a mile away, is open from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. So I don't feel like it's meeting a need in that immediate area. One comment that was also made was that the station would be the only one on this side of 69. But once the highway is divided, any gas station along this way is going to need the location of people coming in and out by traffic lights, so it's not going to be even a convenience that way. So at the, at the April 18th Board of Adjustment meeting, none of our concerns that we all stood up and shared were brought up and discussed. I mean, we, they politely sat and listened to us, and then they immediately went to vote and approved the rezoning. So I guess my question is to ask the City Council to act within your powers, to uphold the city codes that I feel are, are not being upheld at this point, and to acknowledge the negative impacts that this project's going to cause our neighborhood. And, and I would encourage that QuickTrip would find a different location to build their project that wouldn't impact all of us. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Michael Calder.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Michael Calder. I live at 853 Wildflower Drive in Prescott Canyon Estates. I'm coming from two perspectives, as a resident, of course, but also as a career lifetime scientist. I have extensive background in chemistry, biochemistry, and organic chemistry. And looking at the plan on the surface, if you haven't walked the property, it might make sense and say, well, we can shoehorn this in there. However, there's some significant concerns that make this kind of an environmental disaster waiting to happen. It's in some cases, a worst-case scenario. Never mind the fact that, yes, the QuickTrip site proposed is uphill from the community. We all know what happens when liquids flow. They go downhill. So the first place any spill is going to go is right into the community. That, there's no way to avoid that. The other thing, too, is that we all know gasoline, well, maybe, I don't know if this comes from a scientific background, but the point is gasoline is extremely dirty material. It contains benzene, toluene, a host of other carcinogens and mutagens. There's no such thing as pure gasoline, and once it's in the ground, it is literally impossible to clean. It's nonpolar. It doesn't dissolve in water. You can't wash it away. And we all, I don't know if you've heard about this 86,000-gallon leak not too long ago of gasoline in Chino Valley from a Circle K, but that is not that unusual. If you scour the news reports for gasoline leaks, it's fairly common. The thing about this is that it's so close to the community that I appreciate the fact that they're moving the storage tanks further away from the dispensing pumps, but that actually increases the risk, because the risk is not necessarily the storage tanks. The weakest part of the system is the gaskets, the lines, the pumps, the couplers, the in-and-out ports. That's where the, the leaks can happen. I just want to read one sentence from this report about this 86,000-gallon leak that explains what I'm talking about. report about this 86,000-gallon leak that explains what I'm talking about. "Our thorough investigation into fuel inventory discrepancies and other anomalies dating back to mid-December 2023, revealed fuel leaking from a submersible turbine pump used to pump fuel from an underground storage tank to the store's fuel dispensers." I think that pretty much outlines one of the major risks here. It's not the storage tanks. It's everything that's in and out of them. And that requires that gasoline comes in contact with gasket material, which this is a brute fact. There is no gasket material in the world that is not dissolved by gasoline. Gasoline's a great solvent. If you want to clean paint off of your car or anywhere else, gasoline works great. It also dissolves gaskets. And with all of those linkages, every time there's a joint, there's a chance for a significant leak. And all you're doing is you're putting the dispensers right over that place where they say it's high risk, because it's so close to that culvert. Well, that doesn't reduce the risk at all by moving the storage tanks further away. It actually increases it. So to me, this is a disaster waiting to happen. And I'm really surprised that the developers and the owners of the property would would put themselves in a vulnerable position that if there is a significant leak, now 86,000 gallons is a whopping amount of contamination, even 1,000 gallons would be catastrophic. And I wouldn't want to be on the receiving end of the amount of lawsuits that would happen if even 100 gallons was leaking, and because you couldn't clean it up, and it's right into the community. It just seems to me this is incredibly risky, dangerous, and ill-advised. So I strongly recommend that it be reconsidered for a different location. Thank you.
Lee McKenzie.
Good afternoon. I will make this brief. My name is Lee McKenzie, and I live at 2353 Canyon Court in Prescott Prescott Canyon Estates. When Karen spoke, she mentioned about the fragility of the foundations of most of our homes. What she didn't say is that most of them are 35-plus years old. And just the natural shifting of the soils and the rocks required that those of us who live downhill from this proposed project have to level our homes, probably every two years at expense to us. I cannot imagine what will happen when the construction of this property begins, and the activation of the construction equipment and materials will cause even further shifting and potentially damage to our homes vis-à-vis the Lowe's problem. I've not seen anything in QuickTrip's proposals which would accommodate this possibility or allow for recourse for the residents should something of this nature happen. With respect to the health and well-being of the creek which runs through Slaughterhouse Gulch and our lovely riparian area, which I know Kathy saw, and we all appreciate, this little creek feeds Granite Creek, which in turn feeds Watson Lake, I believe, which in turn feeds the Verde River watershed. The Verde River is the last free-flowing river in Arizona and one of the most critical waterways in the state of Arizona. A study done by the University of Arizona cites this waterway as one of the five natural resources already needing protection. So protection of this little creek is crucial to the future health of our water society. The EPA cites the most common form of groundwater contamination is leakage from service stations. As of September 2023, there were 573,296 unauthorized releases by service stations, not due to tank rupture, but due to spills and overfills. The proposed project sits less than 3,000 feet uphill from this little feeder creek. And as Michael mentioned, where does contamination go? It goes downhill. I already, because I live right across the street from this little creek, see the results of the activities at the Lowe's sites in the form of sludge and debris in the creek. Any fuel release from this project would leach directly downhill. A fuel release such as the one that occurred in Chino Valley would spell disaster for our precious water supply. There's absolutely no way for QuickTrip to guarantee the safety of their tanks and equipment to avoid compromising this feeder creek, our groundwater, and at the at the end of the day, our homes. As little as one gallon of fuel leakage can introduce contaminants into the groundwater, rendering portions of it unpotable. And as history has shown all of us, man-made processes and equipment fail. Think the Deepwater Horizon or the 1986 Challenger disaster. To the esteemed members of the council, based on the hazard potential to our homes and the most precious resource in our community, I would respectfully submit that this is not the right project for this piece of property. And I would ask each member of the council to vote no on these applications. I thank you very much for your time.
Patricia Matthews.
Good afternoon or evening, is it? I'm not sure which. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Patricia Matthews. I live at 775 Prescott Canyon Drive with my husband Roger. Microphone, with my husband Roger. Our home is the first home in the development and the closest to this proposed QuickTrip. Most of what I had intended to say today has already been said. I would like to know the substantial reason for allowing this QuickTrip to be put in front of our homes. I don't know what that is. I would like to know what it is. Also, I know that there's going to be more noise and more traffic. We already have a hard enough time getting in and out of our development as it is. And they're going to have an entrance between Holiday Drive and our drive to get into their gas station. They're proposing up to 500 cars a day going through here. Don't tell me there's not going to be noise and increased traffic in front of our development. Other concerns that I have, if this project does move forward, with all of that granite, if you've been out there and you've walked that property, if you've walked that property and you see all that granite sticking out there, I would like to know how they're going to level that land without using explosives. And if you allow them to use explosives, what protection do homeowners have to prevent possible damage to their homes? You must remember the Lowe's incident, which has already been brought up, where there was a home that had to be purchased because of what happened with the development of that Lowe's project. I fear that something could happen to my home and the other homes in my neighborhood. Our homes can be shaken off their supports. Interior, exterior damage can result. Who's going to be responsible for that? Who is going to take care of our homes in the event that there is damage? We are a small group of approximately 400 senior citizens who now live in a quiet, peaceful, serene neighborhood. Our community is truly a bit of paradise, a piece of heaven. Please, don't take this away from us. Our health, welfare, safety, and peace do matter. We matter. Thank you for your time.
Roger Matthews.
Yep. I don't think they could hear you.
Ace.
I guess I'll say good evening.
So we've said not to do that, so please don't.
I'm Roger Matthews. Pat and I live at 775 Prescott Canyon Drive. We are the first home behind this project. Forty-eight feet of the backside of our house is just 40 feet from the QuickTrip property. Forty feet. That's our house on the left side of there on Prescott Canyon Drive. Now, everybody covered all of my bullet points, so I'm going to have just one point. And that would be your general code 9.3.5.E. And I will paraphrase part of the code. If the use is permitted outright in another zone, gas station, somewhere else, okay, there must be substantial reason for locating the use in an area where there's only there's only conditionally allowed. So the Board of Adjustment gave a conditional allowance, but we still do not know what is the substantial reasons for locating it where it is, per your Code 935E. That's all I have to say. Everybody covered everything else. Thank you.
Dennis Anton.
Hi, I'm Dennis Anton. I live in Prescott Canyon Estates at 2254 Hillside Loop Road. And you've heard about the gas fumes that can cause damage to us. Let's not think about us. Let's think about future generations, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. They are the ones that will die before we do. Thank you.
Susan Perkins.
Good afternoon. I just want to say the same thing. I agree, obviously, with everyone. I was a part of or involved in indirectly with what happened at Lowe's, because it's built on 13 springs, not washes. What happened the first year they finished it, the back parking lot fell in. Another year later, the front parking lot along I-17 fell in. Five years later, when we had a real good rainstorm, the building separated, and they had to use giant steel pylons to hold it up so that the roof didn't fall off, and had to go around the whole thing, digging deep, 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 and pouring concrete and rebar to try and stabilize the land. See, when you build something on all those springs, we're great if there's no rain. But if you get rain, hopefully, it disturbs, the creeks race up, and that's what starts shifting. That's that's number one. Number two, it's our lives I worry about. I moved here because I wanted to be in a beautiful place, and this is it. And the wildlife is magnificent. And this wash that you call, it's creeks, not only goes through right along where they're building this, goes through our community, down through the reservation, which their animals drink from, down to Highway 89, and into Watson Lake. And I was under the impression that Watson Lake was going into the aquifers. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But then that comes out of our faucets. So I'm trying to understand what happened to common sense and caring about the environment and other people and our wildlife. When you get to be a senior and your life starts speeding even faster, you're going to want to hold on to the good things, the healthy things. That would be your family, your friends, your animals, and where you live. Please, please don't let us down. We need your support. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Do we have any other concerns or comments on the council? Councilman Gambogi? Kaylee, what other boards and commissions has this proposal been before, and what have been the the results?
Sure. Actually, I pulled up the slide right here. So under the heading, the timeline. So it went to Planning and Zoning Commission, February 29. We did three Board of Adjustment meetings. And the reason for that is there were negotiations going on between QuickTrip and Prescott Canyon Estates. They had talked about some, you know, arrangements or compromises. That never came to fruition, so the vote was taken on April 18 for that Water Issues Subcommittee on May 7. So effectively, it's been to five public hearings. And the result of that was those conditions, which have been, in a sense, layered, you know, starting with planning and zoning, requiring the six-foot landscape wall, and whether it's going to traverse the landscaping or go straight from east to west, as Ms. Monks mentioned. Either way, it's it's a six-foot wall. And then the Board of Adjustment reinforced the six-foot wall, plus tying it to the site plan. And then the Water Issues Subcommittee reinforced those two conditions and added or requested that the tanks be moved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I guess I have some procedural questions. The first one is, what are we actually actioning on today? As I read it, it looks like we're approving the site plan and the water service application. So it sounds like the Board of Adjustments has already done the conditional use permit. So if I'm understanding that correctly, I mean, what is what does that mean? I guess, help me understand so I know exactly. Like, we're approving the site plan. That's that's basically it. They already have the right to put this there. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, yeah, the conditional use permit has been decided on, you know, because Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board.
Correct.
Appellable to Superior Court. This site plan requirement came about as as a mechanism of the prior water policy. So, correct me if I'm wrong, George or Tammy, if this were to be submitted today, because they changed the water policy again, it would not have to go through the site plan process.
So...
So, yeah, so it's just a result...
So this is more or less just tied to the water, then? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's a mechanism to take the water service agreement through per the prior water policy.
That's helpful and clarifying for me. Thank you.
Councilman, Mayor Pro-Tam can't tell me.
Thank you. Kaylee, if I'm reading under the regular agenda item, it does say site plan review and water service application. So you just mentioned to Councilman Gambogi about a fence line, a fence buffer.
Yes.
Are you specifically talking about a concrete fence, or are you talking about the landscaping fencing that they were required?
It's a wall, so it's going to be a block wall, and the wall detail will be reviewed at time of permitting. So, you know, the the condition put on by Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustment didn't specify the material. And I could actually have Daniel clarify what type of wall thing I'm putting in, okay?
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening. It's going to be a block wall, whether that's brick to match the building or a cinder block that would be faced to complement the building. So it's always our intention. So as it was mentioned, that we tried to work out some negotiations, but we have tried to honor all the stuff that even haven't been stipulated. on us and still have maintained this entire time through all these public meetings, that we are going to respect that. We're not building any further... Sorry, it's very distracting. We're not building any further. Of the property you saw, 143,000 square feet is being untouched. No construction equipment, no building on it. We're only building on 97,000 square feet of it, so the majority of it's untouched. We're trying to do everything in the spirit of that you guys have asked for. The wall is going to be going and the wall actually wraps around the entire, it wraps around two sides of the site. We actually made the wall bigger than what was stipulated.
But it's a six-foot fence.
It is six-foot the entire way.
Okay. So, you know, I've...
And I call it a wall.
I've looked over this site plan, the landscape concept plan, and if I have anything to say at all, for the neighborhood's benefit, if this goes forward, I would suggest every one of those 20-gallon plants become 42-inch boxes because half of us won't be alive when those become a buffer. Can you, would you upgrade those sizes? You've got 20-gallon, that's tiny. And if you look at your picture, I've noticed you've got these as a 25-foot spacing according to your scale here, and you've only got a 20-gallon tree all the way down, 20-gallon, 20-gallon. That's not big enough, in my opinion. I probably can't get you to change that, but if anything, maybe as a goodwill gesture, next to those tanks, I'd bump those up to 42-inch, those three you've got indicated there. Spend the money, get the 42-inch box trees and make it cover those immediately. Thank you.
And that's something that we can do, and that is something that we talked about, was actually running larger shrubs. But then we ran into, kind of on the water policy, of putting the minimum in to meet the water policy. So that's where the conflict came. So we were willing and are still willing to increase the size of those plantings. That is something that we've always been willing to do.
Well, I would consider that as a real buffer for them.
Okay. We will do that, and then the city can review that in our construction documents if you guys approve us to move forward.
So what exactly are we left to decide here? If the conditional use permit has already been approved by Board of Adjustments and the Planning and Zoning Commission has approved it and the water service agreement has been approved, what decision can we possibly make otherwise?
Well, the Water Service Committee and the Planning and Zoning are recommending bodies, so you're reviewing the line work on the site plan and the water, but you're not analyzing or deciding the use. The use is already done. That's apart from that. So you're deciding on site plan and water.
So the use of this parcel has been approved, right?
Right, that's correct.
But we still can decide whether we support the site plan as designed?
Correct.
And the water allowance for it?
And the water allowance, correct.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I'd just like to go back to the block wall. You know, we have a thaw-freeze cycle up here and a cinder block coated in... Stucco will probably flake off, need to be painted, constantly maintained. So I would just suggest that you look into just basic split-face concrete block.
Yeah. We'll make sure that it meets all the freeze-thaw requirements in terms of depth of footing and everything, and we do a lot of split-face walls down in the valley.
Yeah, that's pretty much what people use up here.
Yeah. My understanding was the city didn't have a preference as long as we built a solid wall, and so it knew to be some sort of concrete-type wall.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a statement here. I've been at almost every one of these meetings and I've heard the residents and their concerns. You know, there's an old saying that you can put a lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. I also apply the phrase "qui bono," who benefits from this? You know, I don't see a legitimate benefit here. We have three different gas stations within a mile and a half. We're going to increase substantial amount of traffic coming out of that Holiday Drive intersection. We've got construction conflicts. The development on this property is so challenging that it's just mind-boggling to think that this can actually be done without any downside risk to the people that are downhill and downstream. There's just so many concerns that I have that I just can't possibly support it. And, I mean, I give QT, they've got, they've got great programs, they've got great sites all over the place, they do a good job there. But when you look at the air, the light pollution, the risk of downstream problems, I'm sure that their storage tanks are going to be secure, but they can't manage the people that are supposed to fill these tanks up and release the pressure. That's what happened out at Circle K in Chino Valley. It wasn't the tank, it was the person who couldn't read the gauge that said, geez, this isn't working right. Maybe we should turn the thing off until we fix it. So there's just so many risks with very little justification for improvement that I just can't, I can't support this. And I'm sorry, I think you guys in QT do a great job, but there's just the downstream, downhill and all the other risks involved here and looking at that massive, solid Prescott blue granite. I know when they were working on Park Avenue, they were having to use demolition to break that up, too. This is just an impossible site. And I'm very disappointed at Planning and Zoning and Board of Adjustments for not taking these concerns seriously. I know when I was on Planning and Zoning, I was told, you can't, you can't consider your traffic here. That's outside of your purview. Every time you hear these advisory things, said you can't consider this and you can't consider that. Well, the people who live downstream, they have to consider all this stuff. I can't support it. Councilmember Rusing.
You know, at first sight, you know, it's a highway, it's a gas station on a highway, should, you know, make sense. But, you know, our job one here is public safety. And egress and ingress has always been very dangerous there ever since that Lowe's went in. And the egress and ingress should have been done 20 years ago when that Lowe's went in. And this gas station, unfortunately, is just going to compound the problem with hundreds of people pulling in there and 400-plus residents going in and out of their little driveway there. And you're going to add a median, somehow ADOT's going to put a median through there, so who knows what's going to happen? And before, if anyone's going to get killed, it's not going to be from the environment, it's going to be from the traffic issues out there. So I agree, this is just not the best place for a high-traffic business such as a gas station. Thank you.
Councilman Gamboge. Just for the record, we're getting into a bad habit of not listening to our boards and commissions.
Yes, question to Joe. Trying to understand the implications if we do not approve this, given the Board of Adjustment already did. What are the implications for the city in terms of any kind of lawsuits or whatever?
Depends on the reasonable basis that you have. So the use being approved, I don't think, is a basis for not approving a site plan or a water service. But the water, under your policy, you can look at the use as it relates to water and whether it benefits the city. What's that?
Have we discussed that at all today, was my question? The water usage?
I'm not sure that the...
I've been paying attention, we haven't talked about water at all.
Whether the water use is appropriate for this type of use is the question you have to answer. And whether, as it relates to the site plan, it's a question of whether the line work is appropriate or not appropriate. As long as you make your decisions based on those factors, then there's no problem.
So the Water Issues Subcommittee was told that we could only approve or deny based upon the water policy. And the water policy has absolutely nothing in it currently regarding any kind of potential environmental concerns. So the best we could do, which is what we did, was try and move the tanks as far away from the wash as we could. And basically, it's a business and they deserve water. And that's what our current code, you know, our current water policy gave us. So our water policy doesn't meet these kinds of concerns, of environmental concerns. And so that's an outage in an area for improvement because we even brought that up at the Water Issues Committee, that it's kind of concerning that we can't consider those kind of things, but we can't. So that was our explanation to the public that that day we could just move it forward because it met our water policy. It's a business that deserved water. So this goes back to use. This is not a question about water. This comes back to use and the concerns of the risk to the community, not only the neighbors, but the broader community, should there be any issues, because of this particular piece of granite, the experience with Lowe's and the wash being right there. So that's my, where's the legal advice on this one?
I think you've hit on the issue. I think that the big issue is that a lot of these questions are questions for the Board of Adjustments, and they've made their decision. And you don't get to override their decision, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on your perspective. But there is a process for that, it's through the courts. So the question really comes down to the water policy and uses based on the water policy. So the advice in Water Issues Subcommittee to follow the water policy is an accurate one, and that would be the advice today as well, that in making a determination on the water, it's based on the water policy, making a determination on the site plan is based on the line work in that site plan. Otherwise, when it comes to the use of...
Say that again, based upon what the site plan?
The line work in the site plan.
The line work.
Right. Because when you review a site plan, you're analyzing the line work there, whether this flows or this flows or this works, but not making a determination on the use of the property, which is the BOAs kind of within their domain.
Then what line are we talking about? The lines of the parcel? Or the fact that the line of...
Yeah, so...
...or is going to be flow, line of...
The line work, meaning how it's situated on the parcel, the accessing egress and ingress, that type of question on the line work.
Yeah, and what I was going to say, so in our land development code, the site plan process can be triggered alone by certain circumstances. This is in a scenario where this would trigger a site plan review on its own. The reason this site plan was brought forth was because of a function of the prior water policy. So we do a staff, we still do a full review, and we had done that because we think it's important. However, if you look at it, it's really just kind of an outline to give Planning and Zoning and Council an idea of where the water demand is coming from. I don't know if that makes sense. It's not as intensive as a site plan review as if it were triggered just by itself.
So the water use is going to come from the restrooms and their landscaping?
Correct.
So that's the only concern about the water allocation to this parcel?
Yeah, and that's, you know, that would be more of a question, I think, for, like, Brian Ruiz in Public Works, because he took it to Water Issues Subcommittee. He was the staff liaison.
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So I think Mayor Good was trying to figure out, like, what exactly, what type of water usage we're evaluating here, like, what the function of WIS is with this.
Indoor water use, I think, was estimated at about 2.39 acre-feet per year, and the outdoor water use, I think, was 1.2, 2.39 and 1.29 for the outdoor water.
He's asking what it's for, though, Brian.
What it's for? Well, Daniel, I think, maybe can help us understand the exact uses. There are restrooms and things, but...
Yeah, so one of the things that we talked about at the Water Subuse Committee was the water and the allocation and what we were asking for and why we were asking for what we did. So a lot of it has to do with the, it's going to be based on the volume of customers we have, how many times a toilet is flushed, how many times people buy a soda. Every time you buy a soda, there's a certain amount of water that is used for that. There is water used for cleaning inside the site, mopping and everything, keeping the store up, maintenance, landscaping. Our landscaping plan uses the minimum amount of plants, and that's what the table is, it's hard to see, but we don't use any, we don't have any extra plants on there. We have the minimum and they're all on the low-water use on the approved Prescott palette, landscape palette, sorry, I can't talk, on the Prescott palette for approved uses, getting them established and then what? Does that answer your question? Talk about for...
Are you going to use any water to clean the property?
There will be some water that is used for cleaning the property. No water will be used to clean fuel spills, though. That has been mentioned several times, and that's a bit of a misnomer, that's not how you can't use water to clean fuel.
Right.
So I think we came up with that 3.67 by utilizing, I think Daniel provided some additional or some information on data from other stores in the area. So, and that's how the ultimate number came up.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know when, as a council member, I've been more frustrated perhaps than this topic on this agenda today. Because I guess when I came into this meeting, I didn't understand, and that's my fault, that the decision of use had already been made by the Board of Adjustment. And I personally feel very frustrated that as a legislative body, we don't have the control to make that decision, that it's already been made. And I feel like we just need to move to a vote because this is taking way too long.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say I'd love nothing more than to, I've heard everyone's comments here today, I've seen emails about this topic. I would love to be able to be, I'm sympathetic to where all of you are coming from, and I want to side with you. But at the end of the day, what we're charged with doing today is the site plan and the water application. The time to deny the usage of this was at Board of Adjustments, and they very clearly made their decision. And so my concern is that, per our legal advice, there has been no real justification for denying this application based off of the water usage. And as such, if we were to deny it, we would be putting ourselves in a position of liability. What's more, as I understand the process and the water policy now, is that we'd just be denying this water application, and then the applicant could go and apply for water again, and their whole process wouldn't even come to us again. So I don't know why we're doing this at this point, personally.
I'd like to remind everyone that this process has been through these committees, they're all appointed. This is an elected body, and we have been tasked with looking at the big picture. And I, Mayor Phil touched upon this earlier, where we are sick and tired of being told by city staff, you know, planning and zoning, oh, you can only look at this little teeny, you can only look at the site plan, you can't address the big picture. Our job is to address the big picture. And safety is one of them, and I just look that this gas station is going to cause a traffic nightmare, it's going to be very unsafe for egress and ingress, and I think we, as an elected body, have a right to just say no. And I think we, as an elected body, have a right to just say no. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can I?
Yeah, Mayor Protam.
Last question, two questions real quick, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Do you have? I noticed on our paperwork here that you don't actually own that parcel yet. Is it Sarti Productions that owns it?
He currently owns it and we have it under contract currently.
You have it under contract?
Correct.
Depending approval?
Correct.
Okay, let me ask you one more thing. I know that there's new tank technology for those gas tanks. That, that Circle K out there was old and I don't think they kept up with the technology. Is it true that those tanks that you would have today have very sophisticated technology attached to them? That you can, it can indicate a loss of gas immediately?
That's correct. And something else that we do, those are all double-wall tanks. And typically they're fiberglass and they have a saltwater brine in it. And they have pressure sensors in them too to detect. So anything that's, I think it's less than a quarter of a gallon, it can detect. And then on top of that, we have a lot of redundancy systems that are monitored. And so what they do is they always are back, back charging the fuel pipes and up to the dispensers to check for any leaks in there as well. As it was mentioned, that the most vulnerable place for a leak is always at a joint or a transition. So that's why every joint and transition is put in a double-wall sump on top of the double-wall pipe that has also an additional sleeving on it. The gaskets are specifically designed for petroleum use not to leak. And then they also have an extra pipe dope or pipe goop that goes on the top of them as well as a mechanical fitting.
And what is the success rate? Do you have a percentage on whether, the failure rate on those? The reason I'm asking this is I have a son who does not gas stations, but he has this very sophisticated tank technology. He carries around his phone. His, his business is water, so he can tell if it goes down an inch that it wasn't supposed to. He gets an alert that sends somebody out there immediately to find out what's going on. I was assuming that you were going to have the latest and the greatest in this tank technology. But what is the failure rate on those? Do you just, I mean, you don't have to go into any big explanation, but has anybody checked into the failure rate?
Yeah, to my knowledge, QuickTrip does not have any failed tanks.
I'm sorry?
QuickTrip does not have, to my knowledge, QuickTrip doesn't have any failed tanks.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think there's anything more that we can discuss here. But I can tell you that I don't want to have my name attached to the approval on this. So I'm going to vote to abstain. And according to our city charter, an abstention is recorded as a positive vote. But I'm not going to have my name attached to this. And if that's the only option I have, then that's where I am. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of WSA 23-063.
I second it. We have an emotion, motion in a second, please vote.
Mayor Protam? You can just tell me what you want to vote on. Please. No, thank you. Passes 331 because an abstention counts as a yes.
Then do we have to do the site plan as well?
I need a motion on the site plan as well, please.
All right, can you put it back up there? Oh, never mind. I move to approve site, S I T E 23-015.
Second.
Mayor Protam?
Sorry about that, no.
Fails 34. All right. Next item is approval of city contract number 2024-216 with Fan Contracting for construction of the solid waste scale and fee booth relocation project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works, Capital Program Manager. Item I have for you today is a new solid waste scale and fee booth relocation. This language is taken directly from the, the council memo. So the project includes reconstructing the severely distressed asphalt pavement on Sundog Ranch Road and widening the roadway to improve ingress and ingress to and from the solid waste facility to the benefits of users.
Ladies and gentlemen, we still have a meeting going on that our staff is doing a presentation for. If you could please quietly exit if you're leaving, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sorry, I'll get started again. So this project will improve the ingress and egress to and from the solid waste facility to the benefit of the users, transfer station staff, as well as fire and police personnel accessing their training facilities, which are located at the, the north end of Sundog Ranch Road. The project also includes constructing a new fee booth and providing installation of new scales. So I wanted to show you a bigger picture map. I know there's been some questions asked about exactly where this will be located. Hopefully you can see everything pretty well. The intersection of Prescott Lakes Parkway, SRT 9 is on the left-hand side. Watson Woods is the area between Highway 89 and Transfer Station. The new scale location is what's outlined in green. That's where the widening will take place, that's where the new scales will go. The current scales up in the upper right-hand corner shows the current scale location. Vehicles have to come off Sundog Ranch Road and hide, I imagine, probably Monday mornings, Saturday mornings. Tremendous amount of traffic on Sundog Ranch Road to get in and out of the transfer station. If you see the kind of, the road that kind of curls up a little bit at the top, just outside the fire facility, that's where vehicles have to queue inside the facility to dump and then dump out and then go across the scale to way out. It's a very congested area and once that gets crowded, we cannot bring any more vehicles across the scale. So they're stuck out on Sundog Ranch Road. It impacts fire and police personnel being able to access their facilities on the north side of the property. And then this is a more detailed site map of where it'll be located. The angled kind of shadow boxes you see up there, those are the current recycling bins that if you're familiar with, they're kind of a light blue in color, sit right outside the employee parking. So that's where the scale and fee booth will be located. And then you can see there's bypass lanes on both sides of the scale to help facilitate solid waste employees getting out of the facility, fire, police personnel getting their training facilities as well as employee movement. So project was advertised on March 10th and 17th of 2024. We received two bids on April 18th. Public Works is recommending the award of the low bid to Fan Contracting in the amount of $2,338,441.90. The engineer's estimate for the project was $2,467,000, $67,257.75. As was noted in the council memo, both bids were corrected for mathematical errors that, but had no effect on the rankings. They were minimal dollar amounts. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from Fan Contracting. Verification of license, bonding, references, and past performance of Public Works projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for this project and funding for the project is budgeted in FY '25 from the Streets and Solid Waste Fund. And with that, I will take any questions and Brady Higgs, our Solid Waste Superintendent, is here with me as well.
Should I make a?
Mayor, Councilmember Rusing.
Oddly, I'm a frequent visitor to the transfer station and I, I support this project. I mean, it's, it's a great idea, moving the scales and widening the road because due to growth, more and more people are going to be using the, the transfer station. So I think this is a, a great project.
I'll entertain a motion.
First, I want to compliment Brady. That was a great presentation.
No problem, anytime.
I'd love to make that motion. I move to approve city contract number 2024-216.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
Passes 70. All right, last item, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the water budget rollover in accordance with the amended 2022 Water Management Policy.
Good evening, Council. Brian Reese, Water Resources Environmental Services Manager for the city here, Public Works. During the May 7th, 2024 Water Issues Subcommittee meeting, the members held a discussion pertaining to guideline, policy guideline number 11.
May I be recognized?
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. It's currently 10 after 7. It's been a long day. And I, I think staff and city council would like to go home. This is going to be a pretty involved discussion. And I would like to make a motion that this item be postponed until our next meeting in June. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to postpone this meeting until the next meeting in June.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Certainly, go ahead.
Is this time sensitive? Is it important that we discuss this today or can it wait two weeks?
I think it can wait two weeks.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't time sensitive.
I don't think anything, anything in terms of water service applications will change by the decision you would make on this today.
Thank you, I just want to be sensitive to that.
Passes 511.
Okay, I'm going to close this meeting from a, with a quote from good old Harry Truman. Work hard, do your best, keep your word, never get too big for your britches. Trust in God, have no fear, and never forget a friend. This meeting is adjourned.